Mr. Albro.
President.
Ms. Calderon.
Mr. Tosta.
President.
Ms. Coffender.
Here.
Mr. Lombardi.
Here.
Mr. Luna.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Vice President Dunn.
Here.
President Gomez.
Here.
Vice President.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provision of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the New Milford Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Borough Hall in the New Milford Public Library. Notices have been sent to the Record and the Twin Borough News. The Board announces that under its longstanding policy, it will not discuss in public any comments made by members of the public concerning individual staff members. At this time, please be advised that all cell phones and electronic devices are to be turned off. Meetings of the Board are open to the public, and all members of the community should feel free to participate. Before coming to the Board, the chain of command should be followed. There are two portions of the meeting reserved for comments from the public. The first, at the beginning of the meeting, for agenda items only, and the second, at the end of the meeting, for other items. Issues raised by the public may or may not be responded to by the Board, but all comments will be considered. The Board requests that all members of the public be mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking due to the fall play She Kills Monsters: Young Adventurers Edition. Although I don't want to give away too much, I can tell you I'm playing a bugbear, and this is my bugbear head. This is our tech week, and the show's out this weekend. And as written by our very own DJ Gonzalez, who plays Chuck Biggs in the show, come see She Kills Monsters, a thrilling journey through the fantasy realm of Newlandia full of action, sword fighting, special effects, and drama so intense you'll be at the edge of your seat. Come see us on December 7th, 8th, and 9th at 7:00 p.m. You can buy our tickets at mmhsmusicals.com. That is mmhsmusicals.com. Be sure to get your tickets. You don't want to miss this amazing show. So now onto what our student council has been up to. We were able to raise over $600 on the event to help support different Martin Luther King Day in-service activities. These activities will be run by different staff members. For the results of the volleyball game, the seniors ended up winning against all of the other grade levels and also won three sets against the faculty. Congratulations to the seniors on winning this tournament. In other news, we're looking forward to our upcoming Winter Spirit Week to lead into our holiday break. Spirit days will include Pyjama Day, Holiday Sweater Day, Family Photo Day, Blizzard Blowout Day, and Holiday Characters Day. We're excited to bring in the holiday season with our fun spirit days. So that's what our student council is doing currently.
What's Family Photo?
It's a day where you can dress up with your friends. And you know how families send out Christmas cards? You can all dress up alike so it looks like you would be taking a Christmas card together.
That's great.
I don't think anybody who presents at the Board meetings, Mackenzie gets the smiles that you do when you just open your mouth, or just smiles when you speak. Wishing you the best this weekend.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
How many entries were happened during the faculty versus student fall?
Actually, I know of. No, we were a little scared. We were like, oh no, it's gonna happen. But no, nothing really happened.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Well, thank you for presenting. I know you're still rehearsing and you're rehearsing.
Good luck this weekend.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mackenzie. Have a great show.
Okay, so we have several presentations. We're going to start with a profile of a New Milford graduate. Dr. Mackenzie Murphy.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you again. And that is a tough act to follow. But if I knew we could bring costumes next time, please tell me, Dr. Kuchar.
Absolutely.
And I know where I'm bringing my wife on date night this weekend. But first of all, thank you. I want, you know, as a former school superintendent, I know how vital a school board is. So while I don't know all of you, I do want to thank you for volunteering and taking time away from your families to serve the New Milford communities. It's a critical part of public education. And most people don't realize how difficult it is. So I thank the board members for doing that. A little background about what we hear tonight to talk about, and that is the development of a profile of a New Milford graduate. So we're going to talk about what it is, what the process is, and why it's important. And along the way, if you have any questions, please do not hesitate to ask me. I do want to begin by saying kudos to Dr. Shandling, the leadership team, for bringing this initiative to the community. I think it's critical for several reasons that we're going to talk about today. But let's first start, what is it? And the best way that I can explain it is, it's a visual representation of what your vision and mission is. And it's an infographic, and we know we're living in the world of pictures. Tell a thousand words. Well, now in 2023, it tells a million words, and probably will be doubled by the time, you know, the end of the year comes on. So you'll see, I have examples of some profiles here. And, you know, let's talk a little bit about what the visual representations are, right? It identifies the skills and habits of mind. What am I talking about? Well, I'm talking about those skills that our students need to be successful in their future, not ours. Okay? If you, you know, look at what the research is saying, employers now are not asking for students to be schooled in The Pearl, if you remember that seventh grade awful book, right? Right? It's not, they don't want to know the main idea of Ethan Fromm, another eighth grade book that scarred me in Pro River Middle School. What they want is, they want employees who know how to think critically, know how to solve problems, know how to communicate, know how to collaborate, know how to be reflected, right? So when we're talking about those skills and habits of mind, we're talking about things that employers have identified as lacking in their employees. A profile also represents the collective vision of the community. So when I talk about the process today, you'll see that the entire community, all the stakeholders, will have input on what the profile of a New Milford graduate should be. And that's important because not only should your educators be a part of it, but your family, your parents should be a part of it, your rotaries, your town council, your senior citizens, because it's one community. And what these represent is a collective vision of the entire community, not just a school board, or not just teachers, not just students, okay? And it's cut off here. But one of the things that I stress is, your infographic, your profile, becomes your North Star. And it's a phrase you're going to hear a lot over the next six months, is it's the North Star that brings everything together. Now, following me, it will be a far less entertaining presentation on facilities, okay? Let's be honest, the old lady was presenting. You know, he's not the strongest presenter. But, but, but it's really great that facilities are following this initiative, because facilities do impact learning, okay? And learning is impacted by facilities. So what do I mean? If we need students to graduate who know how to collaborate and know how to be creative, then our facilities need to match that profile. So that's what I mean by the North Star. So over the next six months, we'll develop the North Star for New Milford, and you're starting the process in all sincerity. It's the best. You'll start the process of what the facility should look like to help match what the profile of a New Milford student should be. So it's impeccable timing, okay? So I'm not going to put you on the spot, but if I was going to, do you know the New Milford mission without looking?
Yeah, without looking.
Right, right. I said without looking, right? Right? So we all have mission statements. If you work in a company, you have a mission statement. School districts have a mission statement. Sometimes we have a vision statement. Sometimes we confuse the two. They're not the same, having a mission statement and a vision statement. What a profile does, it actually becomes real for all the stakeholders. So I did read, I was in the back reading the mission statement. There's a lot of words to it, right? One of the ways you're going to know you will be successful in three years with the implementation of your profile is that a student can talk to you. What does that profile represent? A family member can talk to you. A staff member can talk to you, okay? So that North Star becomes the common language for the district. It becomes the safe place for, when we're talking about revising curriculum, we need to talk about making sure those habits of mind, whatever New Milford identifies, is part of the curriculum. It's part of the instructional practices. So for me, it's taking your mission statement, making it real, and actualizing it in the classroom. So feel free to ask any questions as we move along. So come January, we're going to start hopefully the process of developing it. We'll go out to the community. I'll go out to the stakeholders. The team will ask the community for their input on the qualities, the attributes they see in a, or they want to see as a graduate. We'll put out a survey and ask for survey responses to this end. And then we collect all that data, we synthesize it, and then you create the infographic. Some school districts I work with, the students are a part of it. Sometimes it's just, you know, a professional does the infographic per se, okay? So this was the iteration of the Ramsey profile of a graduate, how we started. I started with a spreadsheet, and I quickly realized I was an elementary school teacher by trade and not a graphic designer. And then it moved along the way. But if you look at the Ramsey profile of a graduate, this become, this is the North Star for Ramsey. So at the base of our, we based ours on John Wooden's Pyramid of Success, if anyone is a college basketball fan, in the early 1970s, he was a Hall of Famer coach. At the bottom of our pyramid is content. We believe in Ramsey, or they, I should say, they believe in Ramsey. That content, you need a solid foundation of knowledge. A lot of people think today's progressive education, knowledge doesn't mean anything. No, it's more important than ever. Even though knowledge is doubling every two weeks, it seems like, it's really important. But it's not just what you know, it's what you do with what you know. And there's the difference, okay? And that's where your profile will come in. And then on top of that are the four Cs. Ramsey identified critical thinking, collaboration, communication, and creativity. And then you go up and pyramid to habits of mind and so forth. But this is what the community identified as important to them. By the time they graduate to 12th grade, these are the attributes, the habits of mind that they want to see in their students. Okay? So that's six months' worth of work, but it doesn't stop there. You then use the profile on these four questions. So when you're revising the curriculum, you have to intentionally plan that these attributes, habits of mind, and so forth, are purposely taught and assessed in your curriculum, okay? You have to plan your staff development around making sure that our teachers understand what creativity looks like in the elementary school, what does it look like in the middle school. So your profile, while it's going to be wonderful, and it's going to look great, is, it has far deeper meaning and a real impact on your school district for years to come, especially when it comes to curriculum instruction assessment. And also, it's a great visual representation. So I used the pictures that I had from my district, but I've worked with other districts. You can see that these represent, these habits of mind are in our schools and around our school district as reminders to our community of what we value in Ramsey. So that's a little car that we have, you know, which is the pyramid and so forth. We still have our mascot, there's still the Rams and so forth. But these are just examples of visual representations. You use these words. This is something that I emailed out to the community. And I will tell you that our profile was invaluable during the lockdown and the pandemic to remind our community what we value most. So it's a wonderful way for you to rally around and show and continue to remind the New Milford community what you value, what hopefully I become a we here, what we value in the sense of what is the purpose of schooling in New Milford. what is the purpose of schooling in New Milford. That's in a nutshell. Right? We'll be less time than the questions. Just so you know, I knew Frank for a long time, so. Questions about what the purpose is, the process? Please.
How many districts are using this profile?
I, I don't know. I don't have data on it. But I would say at my last count, it was 15 in New Jersey, but it's national.
Right. Like locally, I guess.
I know Riverdale is using it. I'm working, I worked with Little Falls, Westfield, in my sphere, that's what I know.
And how many years have you been working in?
I just retired, so this is a new gig for me.
How many years have you been in the profile?
No, it's just me. So.
So this is only?
Yeah.
Well, tell us a little bit about your background.
Oh, okay. So I recently retired as the school superintendent of Ramsey for a decade. And I knew early on that we needed, we had a mission statement that didn't make any sense. It was long, it was convoluted. The only time we referred to it was during CUSAC. And depending on who the county superintendent was, he needed to have it in every room, he had it printed out. So I knew that while Ramsey, as you know, is a well-run and high-achieving district, we didn't have a mission that was actualized. So I was going to revise the mission statement, you know, through strategic planning. And then I caught on to this concept of developing, you know, a portrait of what a graduate would be. And then from there, it rolled out, and so here we are.
So if I can too, being, going to school boards for different workshops, right? So last year, I mean, last year or the year before, it's been around a little bit. The school boards also offers as a, as a service meeting that it's been around for a while when you're developing your mission statement to go a step further and don't just kind of do it within your four walls, but rather go out to the community, get the community to be everything that you just mentioned, except calling it a profile of a graduate. Kind of doing all of that same stuff. And really getting the community involved in, being involved, and they own it too. So that's really, I think, the benefit of this. And so in that way, so I do appreciate that very much. I did have a question though. So the six months, you said that this will be, that would be the first six months of doing all of that. And then how long with the rest of the steps?
The, the four?
Yeah.
I hand that over to the assistant superintendent of curriculum, and then she, so when you're revising your curriculum, right? You then think about those habits or those, uh, have, you, those attributes, sorry, that you identified, and then you have to work it into the revision cycle of your curriculum. So what I have suggested is, you don't do it, sometimes the state mandates a new requirement, you put an appendage at the back of it that says, I'm going to do this holiday. Whatever the plan is for your curriculum revision is when you should then systematically think about putting in your attributes that you want in your curriculum. So a year from now, I don't know if you have plans for next summer, but let's say you were revising ELA K-25. Then I would say, let's purposely plan for whatever your attributes, whatever you identify.
You mentioned participation from community and other stakeholders. I'm hiring in Ramsey. Who participated the most? Was it students? Was it parents? Was it alumni? Like, I just want to know.
Yeah, so, great question. Because this, I've been, I was, I was, I was a superintendent for over 15 years. And there was nothing more disheartening than sending out a survey and getting 11 people to fill it out. And four of them, I married a Ramsey girl, were my Ramsey in-laws. I knew it was because, don't forget, I'm a Thanksgiving. We had over a thousand respondents to the survey, okay? So it really showed that we struck accord to pages that the community was buying in to what it was. Now, I think it's important to do presentations at PTOs, to faculty meetings, you know, to the Rotary, to the Chamber of Commerce, whatever the stakeholders are, before we send out the survey, so we can bring awareness to the project, answer any questions, you know, make sure they, they hear from Dr. Chanley, myself, other committee members per se, about what the purpose is. We, we only let, and I don't, I don't remember the reason why, it was just, I think, 10 to 12 grade students who had access to the survey. Because I think we felt, we tried to simplify the survey for language purposes, and then when we were piloting the survey, you know, the middle schoolers, there's some sophistication to the language, and we wanted to make sure that the data was authentic in the sense that we changed the survey too much, that we weren't able to identify, you know, the eight to 10 attributes. So we decided after field testing to do 10 to 12 grade. But every staff member, so it wasn't just parents. Every community member got access to the survey. So, you know, one of the challenges we'll have come winter is, how do we get, you know, to, I presented at senior citizen group, I asked them to forward the survey link.
So you brought attention to the fact that very few people really know what the district's mission visions are in most districts. So can you just share with the board, I attended a workshop that you presented. Can you share with the board the way that you bring this to life, let's say visibly, in the schools and the classrooms and through lessons, for example, so that everybody is humanly aware of what the ultimate goals are?
So, so in our, I, I'm not on my laptop, but this is an example, okay? So we believe communication, they, Ramsey believes communication is essential. So we then developed grade level appropriate signs, posters, of what communication looks like at a K-5 level, or actually a Princeton model, K-3 level, or 3, 4, 5 level, 6, 8 level, 9 to 12 level. So you will see signs such as this, signs that say creativity, signs that say reflection, empathy, around our school, in our classrooms, that are grade level appropriate. And what I'm really proud of, this is not store, store bought, okay? This is part of the curriculum work. So if we're working again on K-5 ELA, we're working on, what does that look like? What are the questions that should be guiding the area of communication? So, you know, this is done in campus, and then I just went and blew it up, you know, like it's, but this is invaluable from an instructional perspective because everyone can use the word communication or creative, you know, being creative. No, there is intention behind that. And we have to make sure our staff understand it, and as important, our students understand it. So, so that's the only example that I have in this slideshow.
Your explanation. I don't want to be on the spot. But I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about the capstone project?
Oh, sure.
And how that really took the life of a dome from the students' experience.
Yeah. So one of the things that we did along the way is, this sounds great, but how do you measure whether or not the students are doing it, right? That's ultimately really important. Sounds wonderful. So we have what we call profile projects in third, fifth, eighth, and 12th grade. So you take, or go back. So you go back to our profile, right? So in third grade, they have a profile project that doesn't encompass all of this because, right? It just encompasses some of them. And we strategically planned out by third grade, we, I think we focused on critical thinking and creativity. So they have a performance assessment, all third graders do in Ramsey. And then in fifth grade, they have another one that builds upon. Those two, we added another two on. And then in eighth grade, in third grade, it's a group performance assessment. In fifth grade, it's TED Talks. They can do a TED Talk, right? So you need, you need information, right? You need content. And it was driven out of the curriculum, so it's not a new project. And then so forth. In eighth grade, and then in 12th grade, every student to graduate has to do a capstone project. So everyone does a defensive learning. And I, I'll get into the weeds a little bit. It is a requirement, the school board made it a requirement. It's every student modified for everyone on the learning continuum. And sometimes it's embedded in the class. So if you're taking a 12th grade class in math, you know going in that your profile, your, is, that's, that's the final of that class, so to speak. Sometimes they do it as independent study. So if you had an 18-year-old in Ramsey right now, they've already identified their problem and practice. They're doing the research, whether it's in class, or it might be just a class where there's 25 students doing 25 different projects, and the teachers just, they are checking in on them. And then they have to present to four staff members their project, okay? So when there are checks along the way, I'm really giving you a, but there are checks along the way. So it's not just a cap, usually capstones are for your brightest of the bright kids in, in high schools. We believe every student needs to demonstrate the Ramsey profile. So they identify a problem, they have to research it, you know, there's a whole process to it. But they go in front of four adults, and they're scored, and they're assessed. And if it doesn't pass, for those of us who have doctorates, right? It doesn't pass the first time, you go back and rewrite it. That's what happens. So, so it's third, fifth, eighth, and 12th.
Does anyone have any other questions?
I have a follow-up to it then. Maybe other people aren't thinking it. So a lot of this is, when we first talked about this, and we talked about the profile of graduate, we talked about the profile of them as a, as a New Milford, as a representative of New Milford. Basically saying that wherever they go, you know, you know who you're going to meet and what they've done. But academically, not every New Milford student is going to aspire to do secondary, you know, after graduation. They may aspire to do something else. So how, how does that, capstone, how does that fit into that kind of a?
I, I think it actually embraces the fact that not everyone's college bound, right? So where you go to school, if you go to school, is not the person you'll be. And I think it embraces the fact that if you enter the workforce at age 18, you've been through this process, so you know how to communicate, you know how to collaborate. You know, they refer to some of these as the soft skills. And just, you know, for the public, those that are listening, it is part of the learning standards. No one ever reads the preamble to the learning standards, but it's part of the learning standards. They're not soft in my, in my part, you know? I have a 20, 23-year-old, two different sets of students, children. I was talking to Frank about him because he's not my kid since they were little. You know, one is your typical millennial, and the other one is the worker bee who, you know, embraced, embraces this type of thing. So I, I think it actually, for that student who's, may not be ready to go to college or may not want to go to college, I think this validates them even more to say this is not just about my college, you know, essay. It's about preparing myself to whatever the future is that he or she may want to give. That's the way we looked at it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah.
Happy New Year.
Yes, you too. Frank, go ahead and try to beat that.
Will this be in the locker? Good evening, everybody. How are you? I'm going to stand over here if that's okay.
I'd love to introduce you. And just so you know, there are cameras right behind you. So you might, yeah. I'm listening.
Perfect. Just want you guys to be able to see the screen.
To the board and to members of the public, this is Frank Lucino from Solutions Architecture. This is our approved architectural firm. And he helped come here tonight. He's actually worked with Dr. Murphy for a very long time, so I think it would be a wonderful partnership moving forward.
Yeah, I think it's, I think what Matthew's doing is great. And I think, as he said earlier, it still needs to impact learning and what you're able to do with the classroom spaces and be able to offer those, those spaces that actually enhance the curriculum. You're able to do more because the classroom's able to accommodate more. And right now, if you're static and not flexible, then you're unable to do that. So I think that's great. And we do have a pretty long history. And we knew each other long before we worked together, and we did work together in Ramsey, and we passed a $42 million referendum in Ramsey. And Dr. Murphy, I mean, just really pushed us to do better, to do more. And that's kind of what we do, is we're always not, not here to outperform anybody else, we're out to perform ourselves. So the program you're going to see and what we've done gets better every year, and every time we do it, we get better, we add more to it. So what I want to talk about is, I, I've been in this district since 2005. This, we're here with a previous firm. When I left that firm and started Solutions Architecture 14 years ago, we continued work in district, and we continued, you know, to look at the buildings, look at the schools. And we got to a point, I guess in 2018, where we started to plan a referendum. Because these buildings, and you're not any different than any other district in the state of New Jersey. You're not unique in terms of your facilities. Everybody pushes the facility's needs to the side to accommodate the educational needs of the district. They take precedence. So if we can get another year out of the roof, we get another year out of the roof. If we can get another year out of the boiler, we try to squeeze another year out of the boiler. It's a lot of money to spend, and it's impossible to do it under your 2% cap. So you try to do what you can, and your facilities department does what they can to maintain the facilities. What happens though, is when you do that, and you're not like, unlike any other district, is you continue to kick the can down the road. And as you kick the can down the road, the problems get bigger. They become more. So what you're going to see is, in the, during the planning process, this is not something new, it's not something that's come overnight. This is something that we've talked about. I came in in 2007 and did a facilities evaluation for all the roofs in the district. In 2007, many of the roofs had two years left useful life and warranty. Many had five years left of useful life and warranty. And since that time, in 2009... And since that time, in 2009, we did two roofs. I have all the roofs in district. We've been band-aiding and patching and repairing because there's a significant amount of roofing to be done. So let's talk a little bit about what previous referendum planning entailed. So, there's a little bit of delay. All right. So during the, the last go-around, we looked at, we were charged with looking at all the school facilities and finding a way to review and prioritize the facility's improvements. We wanted to not only improve the facility's infrastructure, but we wanted to improve the student experience. It was twofold. Yes, there are capital improvements that have to be done. There, you know, we've done without doing them for far too long. But then we also want to do what we tend to improve the student experience. So we worked, we went through the buildings, we cataloged them, did a facilities audit, detailed facilities audit to make sure that we could meet district goals. Those district goals had to do with responding to change and advancing the district's best practices at the time. It was also focused on career concentrations, wanting to make sure that we looked at STEM, STEAM, global leadership, arts, performing arts, environmental studies, to try and again, enhance that student experience. And at the time, we were proposing a referendum that would include functional, sustainable infrastructure and classroom renovation projects via a referendum vote. And this was for March 2020. The slogan was, "Students are the heart of the future and we need to invest in our schools and in the community." I mentioned before the 2% tax cap. It makes it impossible to manage your buildings and to do a significant amount of work and end giving you. You can't do all of the work that needs to be done. But in spite of that cap, you guys continue to improve your schools, educational programs standpoint, capital projects and infrastructure have taken a backseat. We have no choice but to address these issues before they get worse, they continue to get worse. This was three years ago. So they've only, they've not gotten any better. In some cases, we've actually knocked some off the list that we had here. But at that time, we were looking to take care of all these things that needed to be done. At that time, we had a great opportunity, which kind of slipped through our, our grasp. And that was, we had debt service aid payments from a prior referendum that were falling off. They would have offset the cost of the upcoming referendum by certain amount. We're dealing with aging schools. At the time, we were looking at buildings that averaged 64.8 years old. Now, while I don't consider 64.8 years old for me, I would consider your buildings at 64.8 years old in need of help. You guys have done what you can on your regular operating budget, but it's not enough. I'm here to tell you today, it's not enough. We have to do more. The only way that you can do it is to do this, do something in terms of a referendum. And there's benefits to it. At the time, interest rates were very reasonable. Today's a different story. So what do we do and how do we deal with it? State aid is still available. It hasn't gone away since, you know, it, it came into play. It went down in 2009 for a short period of time. But state assistance is available if you're funding a project through a referendum and if it's tied to education or maintenance of a facility. You are eligible for up to 34% in savings. Now, when we ran the, the numbers for the previous referendum, a good portion of that referendum was eligible for funding. We had some additions which are not funded at the same value as capital projects. So it reduced the 34%. I think we were looking at 28% in debt service aid at the time because of the way we managed the numbers. State aid is still available. At the time, these were projects that had been completed in-house. Chairlifts, cafeteria windows, elevator, clock tower, closet, ADA ramps. These are things that are done piecemeal throughout the years according to, you know, in the ability to try to get things done. Electrical service upgrades. We did the inner bridge crossing at LLD facility at David E. Owens. We did the 6H suite. We put in refillable water stations. It, it's not that you're not doing work. It's not that you're not doing projects. You just can't do all of the projects that need to be done. And the big ones, the roofs, the windows, the, the parking lots, these are projects that cost a substantial amount of money. July 18, we did our facilities audit. In December, we presented a facilities audit. Now, the facilities audit was an order of magnitude of all projects you could possibly do in district if you needed to do them and if you had the money to do them. And it talked about $73 million worth of capital projects. Now, you don't have to do all of those projects. Some of those are, are grandfathered, so you don't need to change all the door hardware. You don't need to change handrails and do things. But this report talked about everything that didn't need code or was a self-insecurity issue or could improve the educational environment for kids. After that, we had meetings with the administration. We, there was a referendum committee that was established, building principles to really establish the needs, prioritize that list, come up with one through four, which are the projects we really need to do? What do we want to do? So that was established back then. From January to April 2019, we reviewed the project capital listing. We talked with board options and shows from a variety of projects in order to get a palatable, or what was thought to be a palatable budget for a referendum. Obviously, money is the most important piece of all of this. We need to get the work done, but it also needs to pass. And it also, the community needs to buy in and needs to understand the need. Projects ranked as lower priority were removed to control the total cost. And that's how we established where we were with the referendum. From April 2019 to that present time, the committee, the community committee was established. We met in this room. There was 32 some odd people, a cross-section of the community, senior citizens, students, parents, parents who are, or people in district who didn't have kids in school. So it was a cross-section of the community. And we had these meetings to look at the projects, do walkthroughs of the buildings, look at the conditions. And the, the response was overwhelming in terms of the need and the need to do this. Unfortunately, at the time, there were things going on in the town. There were things going on. It was pre-COVID, but it caused, you know, some, some issues with the ability to push this thing forward. It wasn't the right time. It wasn't felt to be the right time. But all of these things, the community, the community committee, the facilities audit, they established a benchmark for projects to be done and they established priorities. Again, the enhanced learning environments was, was a key component. Student and staff safety. Obviously, in today's world, we know that we need to manage and control student and staff safety, whether it's via entry vestibules, whether it's via 3D film, you know, ballistics film on windows, on first floor windows. And then there's the blue one, which nobody sees. It's the maintenance and everyday items which really has no value because people don't see it. They don't see the roof. They don't see, they walk by it every day. And, you know, in spite of the fact that if the boiler goes down, you lose school for two weeks, you know, on an emergent project, it's something that would get, we try to get the most out of it. So we put band-aid on it and we go on our way. Special projects, we, we, we look to incorporate projects that would affect everybody. In, in, in planning a referendum, we want to make sure there's something for everyone. So we want to not only just deal with sports or performing arts or visual arts. We want to incorporate everyone because that gives you the most volume. Technology projects, the one-to-one initiatives, core spaces, all of these rooms where the public visits, they should be visually appealing. They should be inviting. They should be in good shape. So we have things that were part of the referendum priority. I want to just walk you through the projects. I want to walk you through the categories that were created. We created these categories, again, enhanced learning environments. That encompasses the arts, learning, general classroom spaces, and wellness. The student and staff safety obviously stands on its own, as does operations. The facilities enhance the learning experience, so we need to upgrade those. That was the way this, we looked at this. From a capital project need, now just to, to understand the difference between a capital project and an educational project, capital projects are those projects that, that kind that you see here. Infrastructure projects, electrical, roof, doors, windows, door hardware, asbestos tile flooring replacements, terrazzo, concrete, site work. Anything that doesn't really touch the educational environment would be considered a capital project. So we wanted to focus on a lot of the things. Now, you see cross-outs on this list. These are projects that were on the list originally when we looked at the referendum planning and have since been taken care of by the district through the capital budgets. So these are projects that no longer have to be included. Now, while that's a benefit to us because we can lower the cost, because we're taking out projects, costs of materials and equipment have gone up since we did this. So maybe we're going to be at a net even. We haven't done the numbers because we still need to evaluate where we want to be. Roofing systems. We had 84,000 square foot of roofing system in terms of the high school. All the sections that you see there that have not been touched since we did the evaluation in 2005. We did the main, you know, the main roof. We put a slate roof on the front of the building, the classic part of the building. But every other section you're going to see hasn't been looked at. So roofing systems, locker rooms, the existing locker room spaces. Shower rooms that were once used for group showering, you know, back when I went to school, are now used for storage. They're no longer used. It's inefficient. It's wasted space. Lockers are in a state of disrepair. Mechanical systems need to be upgraded. So these are things that need to be looked at. You know, existing toilet fixtures, floors are in a state of disrepair. There's another example of the shower room being used for storage. Window, curtain wall systems. We replaced one curtain wall system in the courtyard area off of the stair as a starting of the, of the project. And that was the last one that we did in the last 10 years. So, but these curtain walls are single panel curtain wall systems. They run from second floor, first floor at the high school. They haven't been replaced. They need to be replaced. That's the condition that you're looking at on the right. Classroom lighting. One of the projects that got crossed off, the district spent considerable time and energy to upgrade the lighting in, in the buildings, all the buildings. So that's a big number. That number was about $4 million as part of this referendum. That comes off the top. The problem with it coming off the top is it's $4 million. It doesn't get 34%, 34%. So we need to, we need to balance how we get funded for projects and what we do. Courtyard, there's an example, the exterior, the curtain walls. The girls locker room on the right. There's a rooftop unit. It's still running. They're putting changing belts and motors and doing what you can, but that's long, long beyond its useful life. The existing wood shop exhaust fan. It's in an older and in a state of disrepair. The garage doors, the exterior of the building. This is your pneumatic controls for your building management system. They're pneumatic. They run a compressor with air. That doesn't happen anymore. They're all digital. Everything's digital, can be controlled on your iPhone. We don't have that here. We still have a pneumatic control system. We have steam piping. You know, a lot of the building is steam. It wasn't converted to hot water, so we have corroded steam piping. These are examples of the roof. You know, their, their water sits on them, moss grows. They leak, lack of proper pitched drains. You know, they just get blistered from the sun. There's a lot of open, open, they call them fish mouths. They're little seams where the seams bubble. But the roofs are in their, beyond their useful life and really need to be replaced. Again, other, other examples where they're in the shade and they're getting moisture and they're growing mold and flashings are broken and need to be repaired. This is David E. Owens. The windows here are older and single pane as well. Some windows are broken and inoperable, so you open the window and it closes down. Not safe, not, not a great practice. These are things that haven't changed. So at David E. Owens, the pumps and the boilers were replaced. So that's, these big old behemoth boilers were taken out and new high-efficiency boilers were put in. So that comes off our list. That's a good thing. Again, locker rooms, the, the floors, one-by-one ceramic tiles. You can see areas that are browned that where the tiles have been patched and pulled apart. Lot of grout in a one-by-one tile, you know, breeds, you know, germs and things like that. So you have to be maintained and have to be cleaned. When we do lockers today, we do board epoxy resin floors. It's a monolithic floor with a, a, a floor drain in the middle. You can hose it down with a fire hose if you need to. So the rooms are, are much more, again, where we patched and grouted in tiles that have come up. The shower is now storage. Similar conditions on all the schools. Lockers, shower rooms used for storage. This is a men's toilet that was out of operation and never repaired. It's being used as a storage room as well. Hot, hot water piping and the equipment, rooftop units and equipment are older. The fire alarm panel. There's one component here that was replaced. The main system is still older. It's non-addressable and it needs to be replaced. Electrical panel boards, they're out of date. They lack the capacity for all of the adding electrical needs of the district. Computers, computing, STEM, STEAM, science. There's more electrical load now. And if we look to air conditioning that's been added and things like that, it increases the electrical load of the building. And therefore, these panels need to be updated as well. And all of the panels throughout the hallways need to be updated as well in order to support more power. Hardware, we still have non-hardware in these buildings. It's not ADA compliant. It's non-accessible. In some cases, the classrooms don't have proper locking mechanisms where the teacher can't lock the door without putting a key in it from the outside. Doesn't meet safety requirements. We need to be able to have the teacher close the door, lock the door from inside in the case of an emergency. If she has to lock it with a key from outside, that seconds loss. Labatories in the toilet rooms poor condition. This is Berkeley Street. Fire alarm panel. This is again Berkeley Street's fire alarm panel and the devices that need to be replaced. Classroom lighting, if we already covered, has already been replaced. Exterior doors, these are, these are older FRP doors. And while FRP, fiber reinforced plastic doors, they're in great shape. They've lasted a long, long time. At some point, even if it's a great door, it's going to go bad. Needs to be replaced. More examples of the toilet rooms and toilet room floors. And here's a toilet that was converted to an ADA toilet, but we pulled the fixture out and capped the stuff in the wall. But the wall was never really patched and repaired and things like that. Cracks in the tile floor. Water fountains, old porcelain, you know, water fountains should be replaced with water, ADA compliant water coolers or bottle fillers even now. We're doing more and more of. The doors don't meet current codes. They have lubers in the bottom of them. So from a capital standpoint, there's a lot of need for work that has to be done in these buildings. And our list is, hasn't changed. I don't, other than the stuff that's been completed, I don't see our list changing. Our recommendations are still going to be, and as an architect, my biggest issues are envelope, building envelope, the exterior of a building, the roof, the windows, the doors. Biggest issue because if the roof leaks, it causes other problems. Ceiling tiles get stained, light fixtures get ruined, mold, other things that you don't want to deal with. So the roofs are my number one priority. The windows, what goods were placed on the boilers if your windows are single pane? You're going to lose energy out of those. So you're doing things that, you know, are counterintuitive. So we need to fix on a global scale everything that needs to be done. You can't only do that through a referendum. So educational project needs, you're going to see a list on the right or, you know, on the right in every slide. That's what the need was at the time that we originally did the planning. Now, under new administration and current discussions, things may change. So these needs may be different. So if you see the little box on the left, it says current discussions. There's a question of a need for three team rooms. Our original design was three team rooms. The weight room wasn't included, so we want to add the weight room to the renovations. We want to look at adding all toilet rooms. They were very selective with toilet rooms that were being replaced before. But now everything is, is going to be included. So this was the high school. We had culinary arts renovations, theater support space renovations, open classrooms that, that were being pulled out and relocated somewhere else. And we needed to fill those with, with needed classroom space. Nurses suite renovations. But current discussions are saying, do we need a huge culinary chopped kitchen art, you know, culinary arts renovation? Do we make the open rooms that are adjacent to the performing arts space, ensemble spaces for performing arts? So we're in the process of looking at whether this plan still, what is it? Whether it still holds water, whether it's still the appropriate plan for us. So culinary arts renovation. The idea was that this would be a very flexible classroom space that would teach students to be able to go out in the real world and obtain a job as a culinary chef, to be able to understand how that works. Learning about nutrition, the science of food, as well as preparation of food, as well as using it as a banquet space to show off their culinary creations. So the room, you know, is, is designed to be, to allow the curriculum to expand as opposed to what we were. As opposed to what we were called, what we called it, home economics. You know, it was a crowded room, crowded space. This is the space that exists on the left now. On the right, these are culinary arts rooms we're doing right now. Projects on the lower level, there was a need to create a new STEM suite with graphic design and art and STEM robotics. Taking the lower level custodial locker renovations. But now the question is, you know, what else can be there? Do we put the culinary across from this? Do we create three art rooms? Does guidance and storage room? Do we reclaim that room because it's, it's wasted space? It's storing things that are twenty years old? Do we weed that out and reclaim that space for something that the school needs? And then again, renovate all the toilet spaces. New practice area and changing rooms, new ADA toilets in the lobby, things that don't currently exist that still remain needs. Auditorium, you know, the existing auditorium and performing arts areas. What do we do to, you know, make this a better space, not only for performances, but for the people that come to visit? On level two. So level two project, science room renovations. There's suite three-ten that needs to be renovated, as well as theater toilets that need to be renovated. You know, so we're in discussions about whether these projects still make sense. Science lab renovations, the existing science classrooms are inflexible. That's the way they were designed back then. In fact, we did these science labs, you know, years ago, but that was what we were doing, right? The kidney shaped tables, the raise and lower, the lab and lecture in the same space. Now, our science labs are very flexible. Every table moves, every table's on wheels, every chair's on wheels. It can be opened, closed, set up in singles, set up in doubles. It's, it's the epitome of flexibility which helps the curriculum. The arts design, we talked a little bit about what would be in there, better layout to supply the needs of the program. Most of the art classrooms have zero storage space, zero cabinets. The cabinets are rotted from moisture damage, these all need to be upgraded. An example of the existing art room. Cluttered, inefficient, lacking proper storage. And what an art room on the right is what, the kind of stuff that we're doing now. Again, every table, if you look at the bottom, they're on wheels. The rooms can be reorganized, there's gallery space, the students can do an art show. The rooms support doing more than what we were doing on the left. Lockers, what a locker, you know, is now and what the locker room could be reimagined. Sports medicine, health classrooms, there was a need for more efficient layout space for the boys and girls locker rooms. The trainer's suite was small and inefficient. Dedicated team rooms for sports, the ability to have visitors' team come in during a game. As opposed to just, you know, milling about toilet room renovations, sports and nurse throughout the, throughout the lower level. Science lab renovations, relocating and renovating those science labs to begin, again, to support the curriculum and be more flexible, be more efficient. And then, again, in relocating things, we pick up open classrooms that could be used for much needed program space. All right, David E. Owens, the interior level one projects. These included everything from an enlarged stage to support the performing arts. The stage, recenium window is very small, you can only fit so many people across the front. So part of it was opening that recenium window up, expanding the stage out, allowing it to support the plays and the shows that are being performed there. New health classroom, renovating the locker rooms. And there was, the locker rooms with the two shower areas that are currently being unused. We were able to pick up a full health, full size health classroom within the locker room areas accessible from the gym. So we're able to reclaim underutilized space and unutilized space, as well as looking at toilet room renovations. On the level two, there's a couple of classroom relocations, things that are being put into. As we do these renovations, we look at the building as a whole and we create better efficiencies. Sometimes you create a classroom space, but it's out of sequence. A sixth grade classroom may be down the hall and we want all of them together. So we try to, you know, relocate and create, relocate them so there's greater efficiency in the plan. This is just a blow up of the locker room that I talked about with the new classroom. This is an example of what that locker room could look like and should look like. If you notice, this lockers in the center are very tall in the existing plan, there's no supervision. You can't see what's going on behind it. In the new plan, the lockers in the middle would be lower. So that you'd have better supervision across the room, you'd be able to see from one side to the other. Berkeley, interior one. So when we originally looked at level one in Berkeley, the need was for pre-K addition, two additional pre-K classrooms. Our current discussion is looking at the potential for four pre-K classrooms in that space. As well as relocating other rooms and doing things. So we need to evaluate, and in order to evaluate capacity, building capacity and building need, we need to look at demographics and updating demographics. Just an example of what the existing art room could look like and what it could look like reimagined. All right, level two, this is capital projects. These are window replacements and lighting replacements in the classroom. This was that back then, lighting has now been done, so we don't have to do lighting anymore. Classroom addition, looked at two new pre-K classrooms. The idea now would be to look at a potential for classroom addition, if necessary, after the capacity analysis is done. The existing pre-K classroom is on the left, the potential for what that pre-K classroom could look like, again, for students. This was Gibbs, and Gibbs also had an addition, there was a pre-K addition there, there was a greenhouse. Media center loft to pick up, the media center's double height. The intent was that we can renovate the media center, add a second floor loft that would pick up three small group instruction classrooms. And still get funded for debt service aid because it's a renovation as opposed to new construction. So the idea was to look at the potential to do that and the cost. We now need to reevaluate and take a look at costs and where they are with doing a project like that. Toilet room renovations, boiler room upgrades as well. This was an idea of what that media center loft could look like. So you pick up, you do a mezzanine level and you do, you know, three small group instruction classrooms up there. The existing media center, inefficient use of space, the double height losing, you know, losing square footage. And then what it could look like reimagined. The pre-K classroom, old heavy furniture clutter, not easily adaptable, and what pre-K could look like reimagined. And then we looked at projected costs. So all of this entire process with all the projects we looked at, we actually looked at a total cost of projects. So capital projects, all of the things that I discussed, windows, electric, roofs, doors, site work, parking lots. All of the things that needed to be done at the high school came out. In terms of capital projects, about twenty million, five hundred thousand dollars. Educational projects were about ten million. The total high school cost at the time is about thirty million dollars. David E. Owens, the work there, capital projects, the infrastructure was fourteen million dollars. And the educational classroom work was almost four million dollars for a total of eighteen million. Berkeley was five point five million and three million respectively, for a total of about eight point six million. And then Gibbs was about five million with one point two million in educational projects, for a total of six point two million. The total cost of this referendum at the time was about sixty-three million dollars. Now that was the overall outside cost. The next slide shows the sixty-three million dollars in the column on the left for each of the schools. And it shows that we would have received, based on the formulas and the debt service aid, twenty-two million dollars, twenty-two point nine million dollars in debt, in debt service aid for the project, which would reduce the net taxable impact to forty million dollars. So that's where we were at the time when this whole process ended and stopped. We didn't submit the DOE, we didn't get to that process, this is where we left off. So this is, you know, you know, a twenty minute recap of where we were at the time of this process. At the present time, the question we have is, what's next? Where do we go from here as a district? The first step for us, you know, our recommendation would be to recommission a demographic study or evaluate the need for new space, right? Is there, is there, is there a need for new space? Do we need to do that? Can we look at it from another way? So the second piece of this is commission a capacity analysis. So your, your low range facility plan has a capacity for each building. That capacity is based on district use. It's not based upon how many kids are in classrooms, you know? People say all the time, well, your enrollment's dropping, why do we need new space? Because the way education is taught today is different than it was ten years ago. Special education squeezes square footage. You can only put six kids in a classroom. If those six kids are in a full sized classroom, you've now lost square footage in your building. You now increase the need for square footage. So part of our analysis would be to look at all the rooms, how many full sized classrooms have small group instruction? Can they be divided? Can we pick up two small group constructions in one full sized classroom and therefore pick up a full classroom? These are things that we would look at, the true capacity of the building as opposed to our LRP capacity. We would look at your scheduling practices. How many periods of days every classroom used? Are they six out of six, seven out of seven, eight out of eight? Or are they four out of eight? Do you have some that are not used all the time? Can we adjust scheduling? I'm not saying that's the case, I'm just saying, we look at it from a holistic approach. We want to resolve the scope of work. In my opinion, capital projects are a must. We've kicked this can down the road as long as I've been in this district, so. And, and it's not for, not for a lack of trying, it's because of what you guys are up against with money and budget and educational needs taking precedence. It's not that you haven't done the homework. Reevaluate the educational projects listing and determine what makes the most sense. Reevaluate the budgetary costs and the constraints. Where do you feel is a different coordinate? So where do you feel this needs to be? Where does this referendum need to be to the public? Is it enough, is it not enough? That's what we need to reevaluate. We need to take a look at the need and the appetite for a referendum. If you're asking me as a professional, we, again, we kicked this down the road for far too long. We need to do something, this is only going to get worse. The roofs, the windows, the doors, all of this stuff is only going to get worse. So even if you said, Frank, tomorrow we want to look at the roofs, the windows and the doors and that's it? Okay, something has to get done that you're not going to be able to do out of your capital budget. And then the other piece would be to determine a date for that referendum. If you, the answer is yes, when, when can we do it? And New Jersey has special election dates on these times. The fourth Tuesday in January, nobody wants that. We don't ever do a referendum in January because everybody's still paying bills for the holidays. Second Tuesday in March, one of the most popular dates for a referendum. Last Tuesday in September, another popular date for a referendum. November seventh, the general election, we try to stay away from it all costs unless there is some incredible relationship between the town and the municipality. Because we don't want to politicize the school election, so we try to stay away from it. And yes, there is an additional cost if you don't do it on the general election. But again, you don't want to tie to the mayor or some councilman not being for this and knocking it down because they're running for a spot. And then the last is the second Tuesday in December, which is another popular date, you're going to see in a second. So according to school boards, New Jersey school boards, this was the list of referenda from two thousand and one to two thousand and nineteen, the number of elections per year. They varied depending upon what was going on. When state funding kicked in in two thousand, you can see towards the beginning, there were a lot more referendum when the grants were being offered. As it started to get towards the end, it started to taper down. You can see that anywhere from fifty to seventy percent of the proposals were approved and it lists the total cost. This is probably the bigger slide though. This is the total number of referenda in each month, each election month from two thousand and ten to two thousand and eighteen. In January, there were thirty-eight total referenda, fifty-nine percent passed. In March, there were sixty-two referenda, fifty-two percent passed. In April, at the time you could vote in April, it was twenty-two referenda and sixty-two percent passed. September, eighty-two referenda, more referenda than any other month, sixty percent passed. In November, thirty-one referenda, seventy-three percent passed. And then December, fifty-nine referenda, sixty-one percent passed. So the most popular month for referenda was September with eighty-two referenda. March had sixty-two and December had fifty-nine, however, the success rates were flipped. December had sixty-one, September had sixty and March had fifty-two. So surprisingly, during the November district, the seventy-three percent success rate, it's attributed to the fact that everybody else is coming out to vote anyway. So there's a, there's a success rate. In those cases, back then, it was a little bit different in terms of whether it was political or not, you know, highly politicized. So we have what we call our referendum calculator. We enter a number at, at the time that we were looking at this. And at the time we looked at what we were talking about, it was November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. And there are a number of days to complete a phase, and we estimate these. But one of the biggest pieces is the DOE submission date and how long it's going to take DOE to review. Right now, DOE's on six month schedule, four month schedule, no, six month schedule. DOE is taking six months to review the projects. They've got seven reviewers doing six hundred decisions in the state of New Jersey. And they just issued broad grant projects which they're reviewing, they're doing any referendum project. The guy that was reviewing my NOTP project couldn't get the project done for the NOTP referendum, so it's now postponed. So that's how this works. So we give, it used to be ninety days, by regulation, it's ninety days they have to review. We're giving a hundred and sixty because that's what's out there. Now, if they squeeze it and we can get it reviewed quicker, great, we only pick up time. But we need to be conservative in how long it's going to take us to do. So at that time, I was looking at Tuesday, December tenth as a referendum to vote date. When we originally talked about it, we were looking, maybe, well, can we do September? Does September work twenty twenty-four? Based upon the numbers back in November, if we were to start doing this all analysis in November, December tenth would be the more likely date. Now, it's December fifth, where are we with numbers? It's now looking like we're going to miss December and we're, you know, going to be looking at March of twenty twenty-five if we're... And again, a lot of this depends on those upfront numbers. How long it takes, we've already done a great deal of legwork in terms of the capital projects. We still need to do demographics, we still need to do educational. Do you want to revive the community committee? These are all questions that you need to answer, you need to think about. Do we want to revive that committee and take a process with them? Because that's going to take a month, that's going to take two months. So these are, that, that can, if we can shrink the ninety days in the front, our ninety day submission time, we could pick up some time. But where we are right now is we're, our vote, we need sixty days prior to the referendum date to notify the county board of elections. So we need to know where our approval numbers are so we can tell the county that this is the number we're going out for and this is it. And that has to happen sixty days before a referendum. So if it happens sixty days, it pushes us all, if we get approval by December ninth and, and get our DOE approval by November in this, in this instance, then it's, the board approves it, December ninth, we notify the county board of elections. That puts the referendum out February eighth, which now makes it March, because there is no election in February. So based on what the calculator's spitting out, again, if we adjust any one of these numbers, we can maybe pick up some time. But you want it, I always tell our districts, the best time to go out for a referendum is when you're ready to go out for a referendum. Right, to try to rush it out, to try to put it out before people know the information, to try to put it out when not everybody's aware of what the process has been. It makes it seem like you're either trying to put it out quickly, hide it, and our goal is always complete transparency. This is an example of what that referendum timeline could look like. So beginning the process, let's say we started today and we began the process. We look at, you know, site evaluations and these are things that we've already done. So we can eliminate that one to two months, maybe it's one month. But we still need to look at schematic documents and the cost estimates and Ed specs and prepare the submission packages. So there's still some time that's going to be spent upfront, a month for the board to review the process, to go through and, and look at everything, look at the budgets, and then approve DOE submission. DOE submission has to be made by June second. So from this point to June second, that's what we have. If we make the submission earlier, that's better for us. If we can finish compress the beginning part. If we can finish, compress the beginning part of the timeline, maybe we can catch December again. And then after DOE, we're giving DOE a hundred and sixty days to do the review. November ninth would be to notify the county board of elections. And then we go into public relations mode where we start to get the word out on the referendum, and the vote would be March tenth, twenty-twenty-five. Again, this is our, off the cuff, look, this is not, nothing's said in stonema. We're just talking out loud, and I wanted to try to feel in my own mind where we, where we could potentially be with a potential referendum date. Okay. So that's, that's the where. That's the where we were, this is where we are, this is how, you know, we get here. Just real quick, a couple of things off-cover real quickly, and then you can ask questions. Our system is all about transparency, it's about district and community involvement, it's about making sure that that need, those pictures, the walkthroughs of the schools are shown to everybody. Solutions Architecture offers a single-source referendum planning and marketing response. You don't hire a PR firm, you don't hire anybody else to do this. We do everything. We control the message, we get the right message out at the right time. This is just our list of successes right now. The two that are up for vote, Nutley, as you heard me say earlier, was postponed from December. It's now going to be probably March or September. And then Riverdale is voting on next month, next Tuesday, and that is actually eighteen million, not twelve. But over the past, over the past, in twenty-twenty-three, we passed three X three referendums using our process, using the marketing and the planning that we do. A hundred and ninety-four million dollars worth of projects passed in March of twenty-twenty-three. Since two thousand and nineteen, we've passed ten out of eleven referenda using our process. The one that failed was in Newton Park, and it was the third time they put field, synthetic turf field out. And Newton Park doesn't want synthetic turf field. It's the third time they tried it, the third time it went down, and that was the difference between us being eleven, or ten to ten, or eleven to eleven. So the process is, is a long one, it's a, it's a plan. It needs to have buy-in from everybody in order for it to be successful. We've got a great head start, you're in a very unique position. When I'm talking to most districts about referenda, we haven't done all the legwork that we've already done here. While some of the changes need to still be made, we've done a great deal of legwork, so you're in a good spot. Questions? I know I gave you a lot of information.
I have a question, I just want to say thank you. This was, this was all that you had talked about in our committee meeting, and then an additional extra, which is fantastic because we think, as a committee, this is what we had asked. We heard a lot of this, and we felt like my speaking on it, or John's speaking on it, or anybody speaking on it would not have a seat. For the rest of you that, this is the first time you're hearing it, please go ahead, because we had our turn.
I, I do, um, well, I know this isn't exact or precise, just a rough idea. So if we followed that timeline and went out for a referendum in March of twenty-five, assuming that it passed, when, how long after March of twenty-twenty-five does construction start? What's the anticipated length of it? Is it a year, two years, three years? And then the last part to that is, when does the tax impact first hit the taxpayers?
All great questions. So the first question is, it depends upon the ultimate size of the referendum, it's going to determine the longevity of the project, right? So if the referendum is in fact sixty million dollars, that's at least a two- to three-year project, maybe more. The other part of the world that we live in today is that construction pricing is not what it once was. It is much higher. So we need to be more strategic about how we bid projects today. It used to be where we would go out for a project in, out for bid for a project in March. March is the last date my firm would put a project out to bid for this summer. Today, it's November. And the reason for that is because there's so much work out there with broad grants and everything else, is that by the time you get to March, every contractor's got a job. They throw a dart at the wall now, they try to get, see how much they can get it done for. Perfect example. We bid a project in Lincoln Park, they passed a referendum, ten million dollars, two and a half years ago, pre-COVID. Our budget numbers were pre-COVID. They passed the project, we went out for a univentilator project. They passed it in March, we went out the following year for a univentilator project, thirty-two univentilators. Our budget was, I want to say, three-point-two million dollars for all these, all these univentilators in two schools. Bids came in, three hundred thousand dollars over budget the first year, first time. We felt, there was only two contractors, let's go out again, let's get more bidders, let's give them a little bit more time to do the work, let's loosen the constraints on them, and we'll get a better price. And this was feedback we got from the contractors that bid the job. The second time we bid the project, it came in seven hundred thousand over our budget, the same two bidders bid the project. The manufacturer did not increase the cost one penny on the equipment. It was the contractor who felt he was, two guys were the only guys in town. We went out to bid, we went out to negotiations, that's just our right under the Rex. The contractor came down, the low contractor came down, fifty thousand dollars. When we told him we were rejecting the bids, he called me up, and he said, don't reject the bids, I'll come down three hundred thousand. I said, well, why don't you do that in negotiations? I can't do that, you know, what are you doing? So now the district felt that he had us under the, over the barrel, and they said, forget it, we're going to reject the bids. We waited six months. Every other construction element has come down. Roofing's come down, windows have come down, everybody's come down. Mechanical equipment pricing has come down. Contractors? We bid it a third time, we're nine hundred thousand dollars over budget. We didn't change the scope, we gave them more time to do the work, same two contractors, and we called seven contractors to bid this work. This guy feels he's the only guy in town. We're going to wait another year. The district has eight years to spend referendum. So we need, my point for telling you the story is, we need to be strategic about how we bid projects. So that could maybe take us, make us take a little longer. So instead of a two, what would normally, we would bang out two years, it might take three. There's only enough time in summer to do projects. Windows can be done anytime during the school year because they're done on second shift. Contractor will come in, three to eleven, bang the room out. By the time you, kids come in next morning, it's like nothing happened, brand new. Boilers, they're in an isolated area, they can be done during school. So there are, there are areas in the building that we would phase and schedule projects to be done within a certain period of time. So your first question was, how long would this take? The, because of the March referendum...
It was really how long after the March referendum does it start?
So because of the March referendum, there's, we're already past our bid time for summer in March. So we would try to do certain projects that could be done, like we could put windows out to bid because they're not going to be done during second shift, they don't need the summer to be done. We could put a boiler out to bid, but the equipment is going to take longer to get, that can be done during the school year. We can't do it during the eating season. So we have to be strategic. So for March, we would usually want to wait until the next summer. Any big design projects would not happen until the following summer, while we could put out some projects the first summer. And then the bond, so back when interest rates were two percent and everything was pretty low, they would, bond, you know, finance people would say, let's only sell what we need in this year. So they only sell the bonds for this year, at that rate, everything's good, and they move on. Now, because rates started to grow, we're selling everything at once because we got to lock in the rate now as opposed to getting higher later. So we lock in the rate for the whole project now. Bonds can't be sold, I think it's sixty days after, and these are better questions for finance, but bonds can't be sold until sixty days after the referendum because there's a, they have to verify the results of the referendum. So it takes sixty days, then they can go and get pricing, get bond pricing and interest rate pricing, and then have an, have the sale and sell the bonds. So they would typically be sold if it's March, April, May, probably by June, you would sell bonds, and then you would have that money to rely on whatever project you want to do.
So to follow up to that, yeah, who makes the decision as to when to buy the bonds?
Your finance people would guide you on that. They are far more astute at that than I am. Well, bond counsel and your finance people.
Yeah, Phoenix advisor too.
Phoenix, yeah, and we've worked with Phoenix, we've worked with...
Wulens.
Wulens as well, so there are two, you know, we work with them the most, and we listen to them. Yeah, fun, they talk, we listen. Yes?
I'd just, I would like to thank you for presenting tonight and taking, taking the time to share all this very important information. I also, only because there may be some people watching who are hanging on one thing that you said that I would just like to draw attention to. And that is about securing classrooms in the event of an emergency. And yes, we still do have those old doorknobs. And yes, we still do have to lock the doors from the outside. However, I just want everyone in the school community to know that our doors remain in locked position always, and that we have other measures, like magnets and other locking mechanisms, to address old doors. I just don't want anybody in the community thinking that we cannot secure our classrooms in the event of an emergency because we can. But you're right, we shouldn't have to go through all of that to secure a classroom door. I just...
No, it's a good point.
For all the, for all the parents out there who are, you know, worried maybe just about that little tidbit. And I also wanted to, when we talked about the, the classroom additions in the elementary schools and the reason why, so we happen to have preschool programs and special education programs that are housed, let's say, largely at Gibbs and also on the back entrance of David E. Owens. And what we would really love to see happen, in case people are wondering, well, why do you need extra classrooms? Is because we would really love to see preschool children and students with disabilities in those very small classrooms housed in their neighborhood school with their siblings and not housed in an off-site facility, let's say, on the back of the school or all housed at Gibbs, for example, and then we wind up with a trailer and things like that. So that, that's why, and you mentioned it when you talked about the building usage and usage, usage of the roof, and that's why those additions are necessary at the elementary, just, just so that you...
Sure.
No questions?
So can we go back to the question that people asked? What is the timeline? So if it were to be approved in March, so when do we expect that this construction would actually start? And when would it conclude? Outside numbers, best-case scenario or worst-case scenario?
Best-case scenario, some work would be completed March of twenty-twenty, or would be completed the summer of twenty-twenty-five, some, depending upon what those projects might be. Other work would proceed throughout the school year of twenty-twenty-five. But it depends on what the final number of the referendum is and what the scope is. So it could be, my, my estimation on a sixty-million-dollar referendum is that it's going to be a two-to-three, two-to-three-year project and, you know, potentially a four-year project for, for a straggler of, of projects. You know, windows are, you have windows, you're looking at sixteen weeks to get windows. So just, just the order, after the contractor gets awarded and gets the windows, it's sixteen weeks before you can see that. Mechanical equipment is almost six months to get before you order. So a lot of it is not the process of bidding, it's waiting for the equipment to come in and wanting to make sure that we're, we're being strategic about doing that. The way, only way we can manage the budget is to, the more constraints you put on contractors, the, the more higher prices. So if you tell them he's got to get it done by August, and he's got to be done by August fifteenth, he's going to charge you for August fifteenth, he's going to factor in overtime and second shift out. So we want to be strategic to be able to get the best prices. It's been, we've been very successful at doing it.
So you think two, potentially, four-year projects? And then I think the number that you gave us, just, was the estimate, it was like sixty-three million, one hundred and sixty-two thousand? Do we expect that to go up? Is that the number that you believe that it could be, or is that the number that it was?
If all of the scope stayed the same in this thing, it would go up thirty percent.
But some of those projects are done?
Right.
Right, I'm just trying to understand, because, because realistically, if someone's watching this, they want to know who, what, when, where, and how much. So sixty-three million dollars could be...
But how much is going to be decided?
No, 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 I understand, but what I'm trying to say is, what the people that are watching this are saying is how much is it going to cost the district, and how much is it going to cost me?
So I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but we still have to do the evaluation of the scope and the project. And what I tell every district I work in, the right, the wrong information, again, or the right information going out at the wrong time is detrimental. The wrong information going out at the wrong time is detrimental. So when people hear a sixty-three-million-dollar number, they latch on to it. We don't even know if that's the ballpark you guys want to be in. You guys may turn around and say, we don't think it should be higher than forty million. That's the number we're going to focus on. But we also need to figure, so the first step is to figure out what's that scope going to be. If all these projects were going to stay the same, regardless of what we've completed already and pulled out, let's just say, for the sake of argument, this referendum was identical to what it was in two thousand and eighteen. Construction costs have gone up. You heard my story about the mechanical gains. Those, we're doing univentilators throughout this referendum. Those numbers are going up thirty percent. The window projects, those numbers are going up, maybe ten percent. Certain numbers are going to go up, certain numbers are going to come down. We still haven't done that evaluation. My, my telling you this was to tell you where we were. Where we are is still uncertain.
I understand, I understand, and no one is trying to put out information that is not accurate, I just want to be very clear. But I think if we're going to take steps as far as like considering where we go from here, what, you know, information to rely on, I mean, that's the, that's the money question, right? I mean, that's what, I mean, I mean, I'm telling you that I, what I would think as a, and I, I just, I mean, my, my time that I get, you can ask questions, but what I'm saying is, from my perspective, if I were a voter or I were a taxpayer, and I'm not saying I feel any which way about this at all, just to be clear. So I don't want anyone to think, I'm just, I like to put the perspective of like what someone listening to this right now is going to say. And these are the questions, and these are the questions that we're going to ultimately have to answer as people that represent what we think the taxpayers, the community might want, and what is best for the district. So I'm not saying no, I'm not saying I'm not for this, but I'm asking the tough questions that people are going to ask us.
And at the time that we have those answers, I think it's appropriate to ask the question. Right now, we don't know. But my answer to you is, I don't know what the cost of this referendum is because you, you as a, as a group still haven't decided the scope of what's in this referendum. If you told me it was exactly the same, and everything that was in it was, was the same, I'm going to give you a ballpark to say that it would be thirty percent.
Right, and I, and I, just, you know, I get it. I, I know, like, the, you know, hedging, and I know that we can't, you know, we're not going to say this is a, you know, this is what the number is, but I think to ignore the fact that that's what people are thinking while they're listening to this is really just, I mean, it doesn't, you know, and I'm not saying you are, at all. I'm just saying that that's why we have the questions coming out, not to, you know, to say anything else than that.
Just maybe to help Cheryl out, but I wasn't on the board the last time that Frank was here, but I was on the referendum committee. And part of the process, just so that everybody knows and people watching know, was that, you know, a committee was formed to listen to Frank and listen to referendum information. We got together, we had all of the projects listed and talked about, and, you know, a number was come to was the sixty-three-million-dollar number of the projects. And then one of the things that we were taxed with was, when it breaks down to our impact within our household, how many hundreds of dollars it would be per year? Did we think that number was reasonable? And if it wasn't, what number would be? And how would we pare down those projects to make it more palatable to the community? So all of those things, all of those factors, those things were things that we decided in committees, and then, I'm sure with, with board buy-in, and then, and then that information was supposed to go out to the public, but then there was talk about it not being the right time, and then the pandemic came up, and, you know, all of those issues. So there was a whole process, and that number was exactly the consideration that the committee and probably the board and the administration also knew that the community needed in order to be able to say yes or no.
So I'm glad you brought that up because that is a discussion we were having, that we are in a unique position, that this legwork has been done. So that number is there.
But it's not complete because there is...
Right, I'm just saying, if that is my question...
It's pre-COVID, so it could be a lot of people who aren't involved.
But that's what I'm saying, is that there was legwork done. And so, and I know there's, I know that we don't know the number for sure, but I'm just, that is a question that's being asked. That number is there. That information has been prepared, we've done this legwork, and that's all I'm saying.
And I can tell you that when the initial numbers came down as a committee, when we heard them, we said, these numbers are too high. And then, you know, everybody was taxed with, this is the number that we kind of think will, will work. You know, how do we get to this number? So, and, and that work was done, but then, as, you know, we have all discussed, things have happened. And since this has happened, you know... And since this has happened, you know, things have come off the list. And I'm sure that there are other needs and wants that would want to be added to the list. So a lot of the legwork has been done, but I do feel that there is probably more legwork that needs to be done.
I agree. Anyone else? Paige? Unless somebody else has something.
Jonathan, you have time? I don't like this. So I just, I want to say, when I was saying, what I was saying to Cheryl and something to what Stephanie said. So, I'm pretty sure I'm the only person. That was there. So the reason why it did not go forward is because it was too high. It was 40 million, not 63, because it was after the debt service aid. And it was thought that at the time, it felt too high, and we really needed to reconsider that work. And then other things were happening at the time, and then COVID happened. So it really just kind of solidified the, let's not move forward with that. That's number one. So it was never something that we said, okay, this is the final number and let's go. It was, okay, this is where we are, this doesn't feel right, and didn't move. The other thing, because I know people will listen and they'll listen back, and to your point, hanging on something. What I take from this presentation that was given was, this is where it was, and this is all in. All in, everything that was on that list. Some of those things are off that list, so even if we're all in on that list, the number's lower. Also, there were some bullets in there that said reconsider, reconsider, reconsider. So those might come down. Is there something else that might be there in its place? I don't know, but I saw that too. So from my perspective, the number that it is was an all-in number before debt service aid, that number that you're saying, there will be debt service aid, so it will come down, and not a lot of those things would be in there. So what do we do with the next step? Well, the next step is to do all that legwork. Walk the roof, walk the buildings, walk the thing, take the pictures, do the analysis, do all that stuff. Most of that was already done. You don't have to walk back up on that roof to know what that roof looks like. Or any of the other rooms, right? The windows, unless somebody, unless somebody came in and magically did something, it's not going to look different. So that's what I see as work that's been done. The work that's been done, that has to be done again, is looking at our capacity, looking at our future enrollment, look at all the demographic study, all of that stuff has to be done again because it's a different community. We're just a different community headed in another way, maybe. So that definitely has to be done again. But the physical, looking at everything that's there doesn't. So I don't think that the legwork of deciding what we're doing has been done. I believe that the legwork of deciding what is in need of repair and update has been done. It's up to this board, and if decided to get a community committee together, to go through that list again and say, what is actually something, here's the number. Does this number feel good? If this number doesn't feel good, then what are we looking at here that has to get done? And I believe, again, what I got out of what Frank just said was, you say it yourself, all right, are we just going with the roof and the windows and the, are we just going with the bare bones? And let's not do the other stuff? Are we looking at, you know, where do we find that importance with the community and as the board? Then we have a number. So as much as I understand the need to say, all right, what does that mean to me? What we can do is we then create a conversation around a number that is not the number. So it's, again, past board, 40 million felt like too much. That was after debt service aid, so I'm being realistic. So it felt like too much. If this board says that feels like too much, then we need to look at something else. So I just, I want to make that clear, if anybody is watching or listening or thinking of anything like that, is that that's what happened in the past. And I got from the presentation that Frank gave to the committee and now to everybody else was, this is where you were, so everyone knows what's been done already, and this is what you need to do to move forward. And again, if anyone is listening, whoever is listening or watching, knowing that's not a number. That is a high number, and we will not go to that number. Because the previous boards didn't even want to go to that number. Okay, so that's kind of just what I want to say. Because I feel uncomfortable, like we're doing exactly what Frank said, which is making that number the topic. And it's not even the topic, we are far from that number right now. We still have a lot of work to do over the next few months.
Just quickly, I want to say, the longer that we kick this can down the road, the more it's going to cost this town. Think about it. Aside from escalation in construction costs, the cost of money now is two, arguably three times what it was when the last discussion for referendum. Things are going to continue to break, they're going to continue to degrade, so we need to do something.
Yes.
Just putting that in perspective.
Just to be clear, I don't disagree with that.
I'm not coming here to say we should, I don't disagree with that at all. What I'm saying is the reality for most people in this environment, in this social, this community, is that no number is going to feel good. Whatever number it is, that's the reality. So let's just, let's just be as direct as possible. And it is what it is, you know, like that's all I'm saying, is that I'm not, I just asked that question because I thought you guys knew. I listened here the last time. But what I'm going to say is that no number is going to feel good, whether it's 60 million or 90 million or whatever it's going to be. And I'm not saying that that's what it's going to be. But what I'm telling you is, it is, it is the name, I saw it. That's going to end up on Facebook. What I'm saying is, if we're talking true transparency, which is what Frank was saying, now that he's sitting, been sitting in front of me, it was true transparency, let's just deal with the hard stuff too. Because that's all I'm saying, and that's why I asked that question, not to, you know, whatever. But that's, that's all I'm saying. It's not, you're right, I'm sorry, Pete, are you okay?
I'm good now.
And just transparency-wise, is this available for the public to glance at?
That's up to you guys.
Is it something that we would normally, you said it was on the website?
It was.
It was during the time of referendum because we were starting to release information from the committee to the public. This is more of what we did in the past. Of course, you didn't go out to a referendum, it's not current, I would be hesitant. I would be hesitant to put the numbers up there, but the process, we certainly would put the numbers up there.
The pictures and
Yeah, I don't see it, I don't see it.
That's very proud today. I agree not putting the numbers.
Yeah, I just think that the numbers are also needed.
But I think the pictures and the blueprints and things.
Why would you put those up?
I think the photos are probably the best thing to share because those things haven't changed in most cases outside of the lighting. And boilers, right. But like even the building, even the building layouts aren't necessarily
But that's, but that's also the other piece you may want to consider is that, you know, we could put the blowups on, but, you know, we often don't put full district plans.
Right, Gary.
Just because of security.
Right, but the maps, we definitely don't.
So we certainly could put the blowups of the spaces because they don't tell the story of the building. And, you know, those are things that we could do. I mean, this is more right now, I think, right now, for this time being. The slide behind you that I just brought up is, it's a big one with me. And I'm always a bad guy because people want to say things. And with the world of social media, it just gets out there. And once that thing is out there, people just latch on to it, and their talents are wrapped around it, and that's all they hear and that's all they see. And it's not just you, it's not you guys, this is, this is human nature, right? We grab a number and we hold on to it, and we're like, oh my God, somebody said this. Next thing you know, it's all over Moms of Rivers, you know, forever. So, and we've had this happen. So for us, even the right information released at the wrong time is a problem. It's, we want to control the information, it's one of the things that we do very, very well. We do it in post, we do it in complete transparency on the district's website. So just to give you an idea of how this would work, once everything is nailed down and we submit the DOE and you get approval from DOE and we know what the debt service aid numbers are, we put a campaign together. Your website has a referendum page. That referendum page has every component of this referendum broken down in what's called technical information packages. From the floor plans, to the scope of work, to the budget estimates, to the tax impact. There's a tax impact calculator we created. We created a tax impact calculator, which, not everybody has the average assessed home intent, right? So we show in our slides, the average assessed impact is going to be X dollars. Not everybody has the average assessed home, so now they have to guess, well, what's mine going to be? On your website, there'd be a calculator. They enter their assessed value, it spits out the number of their tax impact. No questions. Everybody is informed, we want the information out. We want everybody to have all the information that's available. Nothing gets held back. There is no semblance of, well, you're shoving this down my throat, or you're hiding this from me. We want you to know all of it. We have frequently asked questions. Every time a question is asked, there's an email address for the district. Every time a question is asked, it goes into the frequently asked questions section on the website. Every question, doesn't matter how big, how small, every question gets answered and asked and answered, gets put on the website. We show it at public presentations. The big ones we put up in the presentations, the rest we tell people to go into the website. It is a complete and total transparent campaign. So the process has to get to that point. And I think, as Paige said, and we do have to nail down scope. We nail down scope, we can, I'll give you the information, I'll give you the numbers, I want it. But we need to make sure it's the right information.
Thank you. Do you have any questions, though?
Yeah, just real quick, and I'll be quick. So to piggyback on what a couple of different people said, you know, and Cheryl's point's good, John's, Paige, everybody's. The one, the one, the one thing that I would say is that I don't, I don't know that there'll be any number that the taxpayers are going to say, oh, well, great. I don't, I don't, I think, I think it's more of what's palatable than, you know, what's going to make anybody feel good. But I think that the one thing that really sticks out to me in the presentation is that in the pictures that we saw, Superintendent Shanley referenced that, there's clearly problems that have to be addressed, right? Locker rooms, roofs, stuff like that. There are things that have to be done. And the fact of the matter is, that's why we're here. It's this board's responsibility. We have the responsibility of the district, to the kids, to make sure that we are looking at this and we make the best decision cumulatively as a group that we can. And that's what we're going to do. And, you know, whatever, like going to the numbers, whatever's thrown out, and there's things that might be nice, that might be luxuries, as Paige said, you know, last time it was like, no, we weren't good with this. That's our job, you know, so that's kind of the message I'd like to just, whoever's watching, keep talking about that. We're going to do our job. We're going to make sure that we go through all this, we see what's in need and what's a want, and what we can afford and what's a luxury. And this group, I have all confidence in the world, we're going to work together to come up with a plan, to present to the public, to say, hey, we all put our heads together here, right? This is what we think we need. And then you guys decide, you know, as taxpayers, if you want more for it or not.
Well said. I agree with you, I think it's a great thing. And one of the things that we're going to do to make that easy for you guys, for all of you, is one of the things that we provide for you is a project selection tool. That project selection tool is basically the spreadsheet of costs with every piece of scope in this project. There is a column that says yes, there's a column that says no. You want it in, you don't want it in. You pick and you choose, and it automatically changes the number of the referendum, the number of the debt service aid. And you can then see on the fly, by removing certain projects or adding certain projects back, what the cost of the referendum would be. So it's going to allow you to pick and choose if something may be on the fence. But what happens if we put this back in? What happens if we take this out? So that will give you the ability to take this list, and each of you have your own opinions of what should be priority one, two, three, or four. That's another thing that will be on the sheet, pick the priority. Priority one to you, when you want to do all priority one, we do all priority one.
That, and that's where it is available just to the board members or is it on your website?
It is only available to the board members as
And then the, I like that calculator that you were talking about, the assessed home value. Because we have a lot of mathematicians in our town and accountants. So we, that will show how, what the tax levy would be. Will it give you information on how it's come to or calculated, or it's just, you should put in a number?
They enter their assessed value, and the number, the backstory of that, the Excel spreadsheet that's created that has the formula in it, it's not shown on your website. Your website is an entry box for the assessed value, and it spits out the tax levy, the debt service.
When was the last time a referendum was passed in this town for a school repair, and how much was it?
It was for Berkeley and D, was it D O?
2010.
Was it this?
We were going to say before I came, I came in 2010. It was before 2010.
Yeah, I remember.
Because the debt rolled off in 2020, it was a 10-year bond.
It was eight, it was 2008 or nine, and it was a 10-year.
How much was it?
So it was 2009, right?
Yeah.
And that was 10 million.
I'm just, it's like what John was saying, it's like, when you kick the can down, you know, and you're not doing these major repairs. So 2010 was the last time we had asked the taxpayers to chip in some money to help us fix the schools.
It was actually to expand because I think it was D O. I don't know, I wasn't on the board, but I would have to look.
What was it, like 20 million?
2010.
So it was 10 million, then in 2008?
I'm sorry, I just know it's 10 because we looked it up.
It's a long time ago, and a very little bit
It was definitely 2010 because the debt rolled off in 2020. And it was a 10-year bond for $10 million, I can look up what the scope was. I came and I was paying the last of that.
And just to add, just to add to it, yeah, 2010. So I got on the board in 2010, so it was decided before I ever got on board. And it was taken care of, something was taken care of. Because it had to do with, it was either Berkeley or D O.
I know it was Berkeley, it might have been Berkeley, and there's an addition to Berkeley.
There's an addition in the back of Berkeley.
But I can get you the scope, I'll go back to you on that.
It wasn't like this, Andrew. I would say that, it wasn't like this.
No, I'm saying, it's a long time ago, and a very small project. Comparatively speaking.
Yes.
The last thing I'll pull out real quick is that what you're looking at here are not, it's not high in the sky, son. It's not desires, it's not, you know, this is neat, this is real, real neat stuff. This is not, you know, you're not, there's not cool in here, there's not, you know
John, Steve?
So, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, Superintendent of Schools, Ms. Shannon. Okay. Wow, that was wonderful. Love this one. It's important, very important.
Sorry.
No, very important, right?
I'm sorry, Matt took your time.
Yeah, Matt, it was Matt, I'll tell him.
It's all Matt's fault.
Okay. So, okay, I'm going to start with good news. At Berkeley. Fifth graders treated us to fabulous in-school Thanksgiving Day parade. The students acquired STEM principles to create truly extraordinary balloons. And once again, and once again, our older students served as excellent role models for our younger students by showcasing their learning in a fun and creative manner. Better Than Broadway was once again a huge hit. All of our students enjoyed the performance, some as cast members and others as audience members. This year's Western theme allowed the students to showcase many wonderful outfits, including countless colorful and creative cowboy hats. And I'd like to think that maybe the Taylor Swift concert this year, you know, put a lot of cowboy hats into the houses of some young pink girls with, I know there's some pink cowboy hats at my house. Okay, at Gibbs, the Buddy Classes partnered for a shared reading experience this month. Classes from grades three through five partnered with the class from grades K through two and worked together on team-building activities, and this month the focus was on reading. On Friday, November 17th, the group of students along with Mrs. Faraker, Mrs. Mindle, Mrs. Corcoran, led our monthly Gibbs gathering, and the theme was gratitude. Students engaged in activities that emphasize the positive impact expressing gratitude has on our mental health. Students learned that practicing gratitude can reduce stress, enhance emotional resilience, and contribute to a more positive outlook on life. On November 21st, the New Moford High School marching band visited the fourth and fifth grade students. I'll make, actually, I've gone to both schools. The students are blown away by their talent, and many of them look forward to an opportunity to join. And I do know that Ms. Haderbauer has said that there are lots of times when the children get all the way up here, you know, to the high school, and they say they want to join the marching band, and they never forget when the marching band came to the elementary school, you know, way back when. So these things do have an impact on our kids. Teachers, just like their students, are lifelong learners. And on Monday, November 27th, all teachers in grades K through five engaged in professional learning with Ms. Shayna Ginley, our math supervisor, and Mrs. Mendel, the math tips teacher, focusing on math talks. Math talks is a pedagogical approach that encourages students to articulate their mathematical thinking, share ideas, and learn from one another. Math talks encourage students to use mental math and help foster math-backed fluency. We're excited to share more about this practice. At David E. Owens, they had a very successful trip to Warren Park for their annual Adopt a Park event through the Service Learning Club. More than 25 students were involved in this More than 25 students were involved in this event, and we give our thanks to Mrs. Mousion and her team of Dukeers. Our eighth grade versus staff volleyball game was great fun. I don't know, do we should have these, these staff versus students games? I'm getting a little nervous.
Yeah.
People could get hurt. Yeah, we could get hurt.
Mackenzie said they were bound.
I think there was something. The eighth graders did take a game from the staff this year, and they, we will have to find, it says we will have to find a ringer. It seems we continue to get older, but our students always seem to be in tip-top shape. So they had a lot of fun at the annual school-wide Turkey Shot, which is a knockout basketball game. Congratulations to Ms. Burns, our newest P E teacher at the middle school, who took the prize for the final student-staff game. We held our annual Giving Tuesday event at David Owens and collected over 100 food items this year for those who need. At the high school, Ms. Peter Friend would like you to know that they had a successful night-for-a-day visit at the high school, where some students from the middle school were able to come up and shadow our high school students for the morning and provided very positive feedback. They had a great time and enjoyed their visit. They also said they look forward to joining the high school in the fall. Mrs. Bernardo would like to thank all the students and staff that showed up this past Saturday morning and assisted with the planning of the New Milford High School Holiday Breakfast. Without our collective efforts, this event would not go as smoothly as it does. All of the students who volunteered for this event did an incredible job, and the way our students represented our school community should make us all proud. We're very excited to share that Mrs. Fenizia has been personally appointed by Mayor Petrino and Councilwoman Hetty Grant to serve on the New Milford Arts Committee that will be created in January through the borough. She hopes to continue creating meaningful art opportunities for students and members of the community. She feels very honored to be asked to help further serve the New Milford community in this capacity. We're thrilled to extend our heartfelt congratulations to Devin Ryan as the recipient of the New Jersey Chinese Teachers Association Youth Leadership Award. His outstanding commitment to Chinese cultural activities has not only distinguished him as a leader, but also contributed significantly to fostering cross-cultural empathy and understanding. Devin has become a spokesperson for our school, embodying the values of leadership, commitment, and dedication. To celebrate his achievements, he has been invited to the NJCTA Youth Leadership Award ceremony. So congratulations. In athletics, the athletic department is proud to announce nighttime media. Students have been working on the creation of this new venture for a year and plan to continue its ascent this year with previews, interviews, and photos of our winter programs. The athletic department, Night Reach, and Project Unify are collecting new toys for their annual Toys for Tots Drive. This will run through next Friday, December 15. The New Milford High School Hall of Fame Dinner was a great success on November 20th with four new individuals, two teams, and two contributors entering the hall. Thanks to everyone who helped make the night a success and all of you who could attend. Our annual winter basketball clinic, Classic, Annual Winter Basketball Classic, will take place on December 27th and 28th with six teams participating in two days of triple-headers at the high school. Our annual pepney nights will take place differently this year, as basketball will take place on Friday, January 19, and wrestling will take place on Friday, January 26, and they will both be in the large gym, and full schedules will be, will be shared after the new year. Opening days for each sport, and just a reminder that all of the schedules are on the athletics website. Bowling's opening day is today, December 5. Indoor track, December 21. Girls' and boys' basketball, December 14. Wrestling, December 16. Swimming, December 13. Competition cheer, January 6, and wrestling, January, I'm sorry, David Owens Wrestling, January 23. In special education, throughout the school year, Dr. Perro acknowledges staff with special education shout-outs. Her short media clips highlight faculty and staff who go above and beyond for our students in our schools. And so far this year, the following people received a special education shout-out. Ms. Azvedo, Gianna Azvedo, Adrian Rodriguez-Liriano, Samantha Torzlin, Justine Mills, Cedric Brown, and Matthew Lurs. Congratulations to each of them for their dedication and professionalism with our students. In the tech department, last week, 19 new IMAX were installed in the David E. Owens lab, and was paid for with professor funding. Archive tech tips are now on the website under the technology page, which is great. They're available to everyone, and every Tuesday we get a new tech tip, and anybody can benefit from these tech tips. The theater renovation, Phase One, is now complete, and both Michael Marr and Dan Preet have been trained on the new equipment, and that project was also grant-funded improvements. Okay, and so, we're, am I... So in response to some of the concerns regarding the HIV process and follow-through in the district that have come up, it's important to know that we are definitely responding to those concerns. So we have taken some important actions regarding the re-education of some specific groups of students with high incident levels. Jordine Zachar and her buddy students are working on a variety of lessons for the students. They do a great job of preparing trainings that are specifically, specifically targeted to the infractions that are happening, and then the students and Dorine go down and conduct lessons with different groups of students. We're very grateful for all that this Zachar does and with what all of the buddy students do. The Board of Ed will be meeting in closed session each month at the end of the working session to review specific details of each HIV case and the findings, and how the findings came to be. So that's an important change that we're going to be making, so at the end of every work session, we will go into closed to review that, in addition to maybe anything else that we may have on the closed session agenda. The entire administrative team, as well as all of our HIV, HIV specialists and investigators, participated in a comprehensive training with Board of Ed Attorney Vic Lapura yesterday. We reviewed the law, all the district obligations regarding HIV. We reviewed a variety of recent and precedent-setting case law in the area of HIV, and we spent time, he spent time answering our specific questions about how we should handle different scenarios, different people had different questions depending upon their experiences. It was very informative and, and super helpful, and there were a lot of us who participated. And in January, there will be a public presentation of HIV law for the public at one of our meetings here. So of course, we want parents to know that we take this law very seriously, and that we are hearing the concerns, and we aim to create a welcoming in-school environment for learning and growth. Okay. On Thursday, December 7th, I remind you that it is a single-session day for students, and the faculty will engage in professional development. Specifically, we'll be training our new threat assessment teams, in addition to some other P A. On Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at 7:00 PM, I know that Mackenzie already announced, but it seems like that was a week ago that she was here in the classroom. I've come out and seen the high school drama. The students are performing in this part-warming play, She Kills Monsters: Young Adventures Edition. Tickets are on sale at nmhsmusicals.com. And for those of you who celebrate, I think Hana begins this weekend, so, yeah. On Monday, December 11th, 2023, Monday, join me for coffee and with my special guest, Kelly Peter Friend, who is our supervisor of guidance at the high school, to talk about guidance programming at the high school and just what a year in guidance programming actually looks like at the high school. It's a little bit different than it is, you know, at the elementary and middle school. Tuesday, December 12th, is the David Owens Winter Concert at 7:00 PM. It is always amazing, and it will be livestreamed for any of you who just want to like pop it on and listen, because the music is always wonderful. And then on Thursday, December 14th, at 6:00 PM, is the New Milford High School Winter Concert. And normally at this meeting, we usually have the choir come and perform in December, but we had a lot of things on the agenda, and most of the kids who are in the choir are in tech week practicing for the show, so it wasn't going to work out. But this is a do-not-miss event, and it will also be livestreamed. Thursday, December 21st, at 7:00 PM, is the Buddy Program Comedy Night. Just so that you know, these are professional comedians, there are multiple professional comedians who are going to entertain you. You can buy tickets. I posted it on the, the principals have sent out the flyer, but I also posted it on the Facebook page. Purchase tickets, I believe they're $20 for adults, $10 for students. It's a great way to spend your Thursday night on December 21st, and it's for a great cause. It supports our Buddy Program. Friday, December 22nd, is the single-session day before the holiday break. Wishing you all a restful holiday break and good times with family and friends. Remember, books make awesome gifts, and I see you all back here on January 2nd. Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, Assistant Superintendent, her curriculum and instruction report, Lauren Agatha.
I have a report, and I will make it brief. Are you doing the other reports, or is that part of the regular meeting? That we're doing now?
No, that's part of the work session. This was just mine.
Okay.
You mean my HIV and stuff?
Yeah.
You mean the HIV and stuff now?
Because we're technically, are we in the work session?
Yeah, so I should. Well...
Are we going to close?
We need to go into closed.
Okay.
It's for that, so, I'll report that out at the regular meeting.
Two meetings.
Two meetings.
We're losing track.
We're going to be which one we're in.
The next one's going to be...
Okay. So I just wanted to update you on some things that we're talking about this time of the year, looking forward to next school year. We have been taking, participating in program planning meetings with teachers across all grade levels and teams. We are finalizing new high school course offerings for the 24, 25 school year, and we will be seeking approval for those new courses in January. We are looking at a new web design class, which will be part of our business department, as well as an environmental science offering, which will be part of the science department. So based on our historical NJSLA science data and the performance that we report on each fold, we just spoke about that earlier, I think in October I presented on that, we need to explore new means of increasing student achievement. And we are hopeful that by offering a new science course, it will provide students with options as far as which sequence they would like to pursue when they come to the high school. So for example, if a ninth grader is entering and taking environmental science, that would place them in biology for grade 10, chemistry grade 11, and then they have, we of course have an option of taking the fourth year of science their senior year. For students not opting to take advantage or take the environmental science offering, they would continue with the more traditional sequence, which would be biology in grade nine, followed by chemistry in 10, most likely physics in grade 11. All of the potential sequences, such as those that I just mentioned, will be illustrated in the updated program of studies, which will be made public in January. That will include descriptions on all new course offerings, as well as visual representations of which tracks students may take when choosing courses. And just a very quick update on the High Impact Tutoring Grant. I also previously spoke about this. That was the competitive grant offered by the Department of Education. We applied, we were found eligible, and we did now complete the pre-award process. So we are working on identifying, preparing a job description for a High Impact Tutoring Coordinator who will oversee the use of funds as well as all of the program offerings. We anticipate seeking approval for this coordinator in January. More information as far as program offerings and tutoring options will come as the program is developed, following that appointment. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Any questions? So not to make you get into the weeds of it, but for those two course offerings, just in curiosity, environmental science, does that have to be a first-year, like a ninth grade course, or could it be a 12th grader? Like, just wondering, you know, if someone was interested in environmental science, would they get to be?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a first-year course, but it most likely would be. I mean, the lens that we're looking at it through is that that would push biology back to year 10, to grade 10.
Of someone who followed that track and then get to, just curious, when they get to their senior year, they have more, they have more...
Another option.
Availability to take more courses. A lot of times, that's where some students, speaking from experience, say, oh, we take a few of these, because I don't know what I want to do, and now I can try a bunch of things. So I was just curious if that's the level.
Potentially, but we do have other electives that are very popular among the students. I would anticipate that they would take it. Yeah. And if I could just add, you did, you said the word track, but I just want to clarify, we really need pathway, because a track would suggest, once you're, once you've taken something, you can't veer from that, and that's not the case. And that's why the flow charts that we're going to provide will show you what the most common pathway would look like for a student who starts here, but that there are alternative pathways. So you will see that for a 12th grader, environmental science will not identify as a common pathway. Doesn't mean that they couldn't take it.
Right.
Just choices. Yes, choices.
Thank you. Is this an administrative report, Stephanie H. Char? She's still typing.
Pathway, sorry.
Yes, I have a report this evening. Thank you. First, I would like to congratulate Mr. Joe Moonam on achieving the new board member boardmanship certification. And then I just want to call your attention to F 2324.134 on the regular session agenda, because it's not something that typically we've ever done. It's 2324, the last one, 34. Preschool Board of Education doesn't have their own fleet of buses, and so their 18 to 21 program, similar to ours, goes off-site, and goes to various different places, and so typically this would happen on Mondays when an hour program is, or Wednesday, whichever day, our program does not go, and the dates that they've provided do not conflict with field trips, and if we have in-district field trip, our in-district field trip would take precedent, and then their date would be changed. And so this is, the cost of this includes the mileage, the driver's salary, as well as fuel. So it's really no cost to the board, and it's a way to offset some of our own costs by, even just by a little bit, while also helping a neighbor. And now my report really is heavy facilities, actually. So our preschool program has increased, has been increasing over the past, I believe, four years, we've added one preschool class per year for the past four, and I think historically before that, they had been significantly increasing due to the rising population of preschool students who we've been receiving from early intervention services. With that being said, we've still been able to maintain all of the four-year-olds who are turning five into a K1 classroom that's at Gibbs. However, for next year, we anticipate having more four-year-olds that will be entering and less first graders that would be exiting, which is going to create a need to open an additional K1 class.
At Berkeley.
Correct. So all of the specialized classes have historically always been housed at Gibbs, but as Mrs. Shanley said earlier, we are looking to sort of maintain the students in their home district, and so we recently have been working with the architect to draw up plans, because in kindergarten, we do have the requirement to provide a bathroom in the classroom, and so we will be adding in-house, similar to what we did last summer with the conversion of the old science room at Berkeley, we added a bathroom in that classroom, and there's another vacant classroom that we'll be adding a bathroom to, to accommodate the rising student population and the need for a K1 special education classroom over at Berkeley. So we're really early in the plans on that, but we do have to start planning for it now so that that work can happen over the summer of 2024, for the 2024, 2025 school year. So we anticipate that opening in September of 2024. So this is a little interesting. We recently received... We recently received some SDA rod grant money to the tune of ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars. And so we had to identify a need. So we submitted, the architect was here and spoke about the rod grants that we submitted, and what we included in that project was the high school roof and the Gibbs roof, because both DEO and Berkeley, we just did the portion of the Berkeley roof this past summer. So both of those roofs are now within their life expectancy and fully under warranty. But the Gibbs and the high school roof are well past their life expectancy, and in order to reduce the cost of a potential referendum, we went out for a rod grant. We also included the high school auditorium HVAC in that rod grant because that is also original to the high school building. It's a two-compressor unit, we only have one compressor working. So I say all of that because the special education programs are primarily housed at the high school in Gibbs, and so if the roofs are going to be done during the summer, we cannot have students occupying those spaces. So we felt like a good use of the ninety-eight thousand dollars that we were awarded was going to be used to air-condition the Berkeley Street Elementary School so that we can house our ESY programs at Berkeley. So we'll make a shift from housing them at Gibbs and move them to Berkeley. And then we also had a late heat wave in September of this year, and we were, we were able to identify several rooms in the high school that were inhabitable during those, that time. It's very unusual that, you know, we get to those temperatures and we have to move classes, but we're also looking at doing either splits or univents, or whatever the case may be, in some of those spaces as well. Any of these upgrades will not impact any work that would be done with a referendum because they're all going to be tied electrically separate, and any work that's going to be done will reduce the cost. So we're not trying to put money and just to undo it later. So that's that. And then lastly, the ASSA was submitted on Friday, December first, which is the report that will determine our funding for the 2024, 2025 budget. We'll receive those numbers after the governor delivers the New Jersey state budget, and those numbers mount in early March. We are in the preliminary phases of developing our 2024, 2025 budget.
Stephanie, is there a report? Thank you. Any questions?
The rod grant for ninety-eight thousand, so that's going to cover the two roofs?
No.
The air conditioning?
I know, they're both called.
Then you added three more.
They're both called rod grants, which is very confusing. This is a seventy-five million dollars emergent and capital maintenance needs that the state received and then gave it to districts. It was money that was given in fiscal year 2022 and fiscal year 2023. And so we didn't use it in those years because we were doing the roof, and so we didn't want an air-conditioned space where we had all these leaks. And so now we're, we have to move forward because the roofs will hopefully be done. Now, the rod grant that I was speaking about was separate from this emergency. So the original rod grant was already submitted, and we did receive the preliminary approvals. We haven't received the final, which is why we can't go out to bid.
So I thought you might chat about our meeting at the county, but since you didn't, could I chat a little bit about our meeting at the county?
So the county office called us in last week, as well as some other districts, to have a mid-year budget review. And we had the opportunity to talk about program and instruction. We talked about special education and grant funding, and we also had the opportunity to talk about fiscal concerns that, you know, we just have as we begin to plan our budget. So we're going to be talking to the administrative team about this a little bit more next week. But one of the concerns that we shared in the room as part of the discussion is the fact that we have, you know, an increase in negotiated labor costs, an increase for both teachers and administrators, and an increase in the cost of healthcare, all of which is in excess of the two percent cap. And then there's the increased cost of just doing business, like we were saying before, just how every, the cost of everything has gone up. And so that, as we plan for our budget next year, we will not be planning with a zero-based budget, where we say, this is everything that we need, let's see if we can find a way to pay for it, because we really just fiscally can't responsibly even offer that. So we're going to be taking a look at our budget where it is right now, asking everybody to plan moving into next year for less than where we are right now. Because even if we come in with the same amount of state aid as we had last year, it will result in cuts. So it really is a concern for us. We knew that going in this year was going to be a challenge, and we're going to be budgeting very prudently moving forward. And therefore, well, that will impact any of the little projects that we have been able to successfully do ourselves, you know, to offset that overall referendum possibility type thing. But, so it was a good meeting in that we're doing a good job and that we have been responsible and that we have had, you know, with Stephanie's guidance, been able to put money away in reserves and things like that. But it will be a challenging budget season. Yes.
Sure, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, sure. So also, kind of in our minds, is the liquidation date for the ESAR funds, the final pots. All of those Fed funds need to be expended by October thirteenth of 2024. So right now, we have, in addition to some of the upgrades that you mentioned in your report, some professional, a lot of professional development, actually, that is being funded by our ESAR, and we're exploring and looking at ways in how we can continue that, but in a more fiscally responsible and cost-effective way, utilizing some of our teacher leaders and experts in-house, so that it doesn't feel like something is necessarily missing, and so that we're not waiting until the funding runs out.
To have, to come up with.
To come up with, correct. So we're trying to be proactive in respect to that. But that will, or may, feel a little bit different just because that extra layer of funding has been with us since the onset of the pandemic in 2020.
Sean?
Sure, of course.
Okay. Any of these on board committee reports?
Yeah, a quick. What you just saw.
There you go. What he said.
What he said.
What he said.
Appreciate that. Have that.
I know, right? Just really quickly, I shared with the board earlier today, and I know, but I wanted to get it out to everyone. We had our athletic committee meeting last night with Mr. Rigadelli, Mrs. Shanley, Mr. Adaxta, and the members of the athletic committee. A lot of the stuff that I was going to mention tonight, Mrs. Shanley had mentioned in her good news report.
Sorry.
It made it shorter. Just, Mr. Rigadelli gave the committee, which everyone has a copy of, just a spreadsheet of the numbers, how the participation has increased in all levels through the fall, and then with sports, notably wrestling. We went from, what, a couple of years ago, Paige Gil can confirm, it's like six to almost forty-two wrestlers. So that's a huge improvement. We talked about the fall honors, but that was also reported by Mrs. Shanley last month at the November meeting. We talked about the swimming program and how, which was, which is on the agenda tonight, where we will actually finally have a closer home pool, where we will have two home events in Washington Township at the Bethany Community Pool, which is nicer for the parents because instead of practicing at nine PM at night, it'll be eight PM. And they'll also have.
Eight PM.
It's an hour, it's closer. And then the team can also practice on Saturday mornings. We are still keeping the co-op for hockey, even though this year there's currently not anyone on the team, but next year there is interest with the K graders coming up. We discussed the spring coaches and the hiring process about the internal interest versus external. So just because we had the discussion last year, the internal process for coaches, anyone that works in, within the district, can just submit a letter of interest because all their documents are already on record, whereas external would have to follow the apple track. And just so the board is aware, as well as the community, the processes, the interviews are done by Mr. Rigadelli, who then sends it to Mr. Manny Pelley, and then the candidate gets sent to Mr. Rigadelli and Mrs. Shanley, and then recommended to the board.
And Mr. Rigadelli doesn't interview alone?
No.
That's PM.
We also discussed new apps moving forward that are going to be started in the winter, something called RoomSpot, which is kind of our, anyone that's familiar with TeamSnap, similar format, platform. I know the football team uses Remind, so it's kind of similar to that. And then Mr. Rigadelli was saying that we were going to try to pilot in the spring activity, but I know you were going to talk about Genesis.
Genesis, I'll give you.
Yeah, instead of adding a program, use what we already have from within. And one other thing Mr. Rigadelli mentioned was that him and some other, eight other athletic directors that I think is important, are going to have a meeting tomorrow night with the NJSIAA legislation to do a presentation on spectator conduct. And they're hoping with approval that that would be something that we could look into moving forward when this, like when we felt, anyone of an athlete, when we felt the paperwork online that the parents and athletes would fill out and have to watch a sportsman video, sportsmanship video and policy, just to keep that, the spectators as well be active as the athletes. And we set up our next meeting for March eighteenth after the next season. So the report was shared, so if you have any questions, please feel free to email me.
Any questions?
I saw it in the, in the report that you sent. So flag football, we still don't know.
Well, flag football, it says as of January. So what happened is the Jets had made that like a grant to multiple school districts, and they are not funding that anymore. So we're not the only district that's impacted by that. So it's a discussion that will be talked about in January to see if we're going to continue to have that approved program because it is something that's going to cost anywhere between six to eight thousand dollars. It's not budgeted, and it's not really a sanctioned program. They are looking for, Mr. Rigadelli said that they were thinking about possibly making it a sanctioned sport in 2025.
Making the NJSI.
The NJI. So, but if that happens, if you're a softball player, for example, you can't then play softball and do flag football. So currently, it's something that's going to be discussed or reviewed in January to see what they're going to do with that program moving forward, like maybe a letter of interest, feel a program to the girls, I guess, who have previously played. But again, it's not something that's been budgeted, and it was money that was there that now is.
We knew going into this year that we did not, could not fund the flag football. I mean, we still have other, other sports that we currently do fund and maybe not enough. And so we have to, you know, make decisions about do we further support some of the sports that we already have in a better way, or do we, you know, use that money to fund a sport that's not even a sanctioned sport? You know, it's hard to, so that's, it's not in our budget.
So you're revisiting in January, but?
Well, no, the NJSIAA is going to revisit to determine whether or not it's going to become a sanctioned sport.
So.
We, we don't have the money. We, it is not in our budget for this.
Okay, so it's not happening.
It's not in our budget in the spring. The question came up at the committee, could a booster club of sorts, if they wanted to, because there were twenty-two students who participated, if they wanted to and could raise the money, could they do it? I said a booster club can essentially do whatever they want, but you're looking at eight thousand dollars with the refs and travel and that plus.
But the answer, but essentially, if they did have a booster club that was going to do this, they would be able to do it in the spring?
Oh, sure, we wouldn't say no to them if they, if they raised the money. It's just that we're not, we're not, we don't budget for it.
Do many of the students who were already involved in the flag football team play another sport during that season?
A lot, because a lot of them.
Change of schedule week by week because of.
Because of other sports.
And track.
Okay. Thank you. Any correspondence?
No, let's leave it.
Okay, and agenda items for discussion. Review of the tentative agenda for the regular meeting being held on December fifth today. Any questions regarding review of board action? Any questions regarding review of educational programs and curriculum? Any questions for review of personnel recommendations? Any questions for review of finance and facilities? Joe? He beat you out. He beat Andrew out.
Wow. F twenty-three, twenty-four dot one, three, two. Mr. Murphy, who was just here? So I have a couple of quick questions. So the two thousand dollars per day, not to exceed twenty thousand. So two thousand per day, do we expect them to be here for two hours, five hours, eight hours? What's a day?
No, it's a, it's a full day, and those days would be prorated if they were part of a day. And just so that you know, so part of the ESEA Title One grant requires us to do a few things. Community outreach, climate and culture, things like that. So this would, this is being funded because it fits. And parent engagement, because it fit, it also fits underneath there. But it would be part of a day, and I just put the not to exceed because that's what we earmarked for that portion of the grant.
And then that was my second part of the question. I, I understand the not to exceed. Do we expect to spend twenty thousand dollars? Have we looked at this and said, hey, we're going to need him here for ten full days or twenty half-days? Or do we expect to spend twenty thousand, or is it just we've capped at that and said, hey, we can't go over that?
In some cases, I'm not really sure because we haven't fully decided all of the different places and people we're going to talk to. So as far as going to things at night in different community groups and events like that, so I'm not exactly sure. There is a proposal in your enclosure, I don't know if you had the opportunity to. There's a two-page proposal where it explains all of that. But that is what we have to spend on that type of activity for the grant.
That's it, thanks.
Andrew?
And right below it, from three, three, that pool, not exceeding sixty-eight hundred. Is that the, is that the amount you have budgeted for swimming? Similar to the amount that we spent at the pool a year ago? Did that cost a lot?
I don't know. I don't know if they. Can you speak to that, please? Because maybe we didn't cover the actual cost last night in the conversation.
So our pool time everywhere has gone up significantly. This is one of the programs that the board has supported and has typically funded, and funded by paying for the coaches. And the student athletes have always been expected and required to fundraise in order to pay for pool time. So it's not a program that has ever been fully funded by the Board of Education. However, unfortunate, and it is a co-op with Dumont. Dumont historically has not given us any money towards the program and has provided the transportation. When they got the estimate for the pool, they used, I believe, several pools, one in Rutherford, one in Lodi. Yeah, I'm not, I don't know the details on. Yeah, there's, there's various different pools that have been quite a distance, and like was mentioned before, late at night. And so this year, the pool cost has increased significantly, and the student athletes are not able to raise that much money to cover the pool cost time. And so that's like the first time that it's ever been brought to the board to, to support the payment of the pool time because if it's not supported, the students don't have the money to pay for it. Because they have done some fundraising, and I believe they've raised five hundred dollars. They have another fundraiser coming up, they anticipate. I think they've historically always raised between like a thousand and two thousand dollars, and the pool has historically been about half the price, somewhere around the thirty-five hundred dollars. So this is significantly higher. This again is an unbudgeted cost, but we did have money remaining from some of the fall sports. And I have reached out to Dumont and told their VA about the. And I have reached out to Dumont and told their VA about the, you know, this cut in state that will be received. And now that we have this unbudgeted expense. New Milford has 14 swimmers and Dumont has 13 swimmers. And so I've asked, you know, what, what are they, you know, can they help us in any way? And I said, in return, I'm happy to provide some of the transportation because we have full-time drivers and they do not. So it would be no additional cost to us if we provided the transportation. So I'm still waiting to hear back.
So, so this number?
Is the cost of the pool for the season.
You said it used to be somewhere around $3,500.
Correct.
The kids were used to raise somewhere up to maybe 2,000.
Correct. And then the remaining of that was paid for by the, the board because it came out of the athletic fund, which is why it's never appeared on the agenda because it never came out of the parent account.
Gotcha.
Right. And since we don't have a pay-to-play?
Right, but it could be lowered if Dumont. Chip in.
Yes.
Sure.
Jessica, this is coming on the heels of the discussion about flag football. Can you just explain why it would, it, both boards are being treated differently? Why we're, we're funding, and I'm not saying that it is, but I'm just saying the distinction has to be made for anybody watching as to what. Yeah, so they can tell me that, they can say that.
Between swimming and flag football?
Yeah, it's one, it's, we can say it out loud, isn't that like?
Yes, so right now, swimming is an NJSIAA sanctioned sport and a collegiate sanctioned sport. And part of our negotiated coaching stipends, et cetera. Flag football is a club, the way the French club is a club. It's just a greater expense and it was being funded by a grant by the Jets to try to get flag football off the ground. That's the goal, to try to get it off the ground and get it to be an organized and sanctioned sport. But it's not there yet. So currently it's a club. And therefore at this moment in time, can't be treated as a sport.
Yes. If I could just add, it was, and swimming is not an unbudgeted, it just, we did not budget to this extent. But it, it was included in our, in our approved budget.
Yeah, and that's all, that's what I wanted to hear out of that, the difference between, because that conversation goes there.
Sure.
And also, why is it Dumont, why, can you tell me?
Well, it predates me quite, quite a while, but I, I believe there was a deal that was made when I, well, actually I know because I was on the Riverdale New Milford swim team. And so New Milford co-opted with Riverdale and they were the, Riverdale was the LEA. And so sometime after that, New Milford didn't have a swim team and then it was brought back. And when it was brought back, there wasn't enough New Milford swimmers and so they reached out to Dumont. I believe there was some sort of relation, I don't know.
Opening.
Right. And it did cost, the pool time back then was, you know, $100 an hour, like it really wasn't very much. And so the deal was that New Milford was going to be the LEA and that Dumont was going to participate and provide transportation. Well, you know, 10 years have now passed.
Anymore.
Correct. And pools, everything has just increased and there's no, there was no formal sort of deal. And so we'll, we'll be lucky to change that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Review of, any questions for review of athletics and cooperational?
I just want to say maybe to the people who are on during their time, maybe assist in softball.
Yes. Welcome back. Any questions for review of policy?
Okay, more like a feedback, this has happened before where we have two policies that are the same title, but they're for two different groups. So policy 3212 and policy 4212 will say attendance, but one is for one group and one is for another group. So could we somehow in the title specify which is like, I, I 4212 support staff. So if we could just do that, that would be super helpful.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any old business? Any new business? No? All right, open to the public. I seek a motion as outlined in New Milford Board of Education by law 0167. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. Any motion? John, seconded by Stephanie. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Any comments or questions from the public? Please state your name and town.
Dan Milford. First of all, I don't know if you brought out your secret rep in Mackenzie because I was ready to come out of fire, but she is unbelievable. And she just, she could stop a hungry tiger. My goodness. In any case, I thought that I would just update everyone on what's been going on since our last meeting and not dwell on anything that happened before that. First, I'd like to start out by saying after that meeting, obviously there were some challenges and reaction from the public, whether it be social media. I'm personally not on social media, so all the reactions I got were in person and there was a large amount of them. So it was, it was a, a pretty effective, not that it meant to be effective, but it was, it was pretty received, let me say. And nothing really negative, could, could supportive. But unfortunately, a lot of similar stories, which is concerning, concerning, very concerning. We still have kind of the, if the tree falls in the forest method going on here. I feel transparency has not improved. And there has been additional challenges. Unfortunately, in my opinion, what I was looking forward to, the meeting I came to was a pre-meeting. I didn't even realize it was streamed or anything. That's why I came to it. The next meeting was the real meeting, from what I understood, was that Wednesday night. And when our leadership was given the opportunity to address the community after something like that, I think the opening was great. But it turned into a very self-serving, almost arrogant and threatening type speech, which was very disturbing and showed kind of the mindset and the character of where we were. That was extremely disappointing. One thing I thought that you said was brilliant is as a leader, that opens me up to all kinds of comments, right? You did say that they were generally negative comments, but what I'd like to add to that is as a leader, it can also open you up to celebration. And you missed that part, okay? And that's what we want to see. We want to see you celebrated. We don't want to see you, any type of negative comments. But it's unfortunate that you took that stance and frankly, it was a bullying and threatening speech. I think it rose to the level of an HIV, to be honest. And I don't think anyone really disagrees. And why would you say that to the community? I don't know. But that was the mindset and that's what you wanted to do. You accomplished it. I thought you should have assured the community that you're doing everything you can. We're going to put these things in place.
I have 30 seconds.
I have 30 seconds?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to take six minutes.
It's three minutes, so sorry.
Well, now I get a minute added because you interrupted. Next, after that, 20, less than 48 hours after that meeting, my daughter was removed from school for wearing an Apple Watch. An Apple Watch that she had on since the day one of September, okay? So now we're at a point where we're having personal vendettas and there's no other way to view it. It's not the greatest coincidence in the world, right? Ms. Chris Malice or Dr. Chris Malice refused any alternative. This was doctor ordered because the safety of my daughter was the most important thing. She needed to be able to access her parent at any time. I did have a discussion with Ms. Shanley about it because Ms. Dr. Chris Malice said she had no control over it and it wasn't her. Okay, so now we know the principal doesn't even govern her own school. This is insane, guys. What are we doing here? Are we going to continue to have no action at all?
Policy to three minutes.
Yep.
If your wife would like to add something, that's fine, but we have to limit it to three minutes.
How come you're not limited to three minutes?
Because our policy is for public, not for the board.
Understood, okay. I would like you to run this by, and I have the email approved that I'd like to sit down with your IT guy on and your lawyer, making false allegations that you are responding to emails when you're not. I'll yield my three minutes. Unfortunately, I can't get it all out, but.
Anyone else in the public have any statements or questions? Could you state your name and town?
It's Rosemary and I don't appreciate you calling out my husband's last name. That was really unnecessary. I don't know if everybody's familiar or not with the HIV policy and the documentation and what's stated on the website. It does say that you should hear from regarding your investigation within 10 days. Of course, after attending the meeting last month, I realized that as a parent, I'm left in the dark. I don't know what's happening, what the outcome is of this investigation. And then I'm left with a letter stating that, oh, I'm sorry, you or your daughter was reported as being a target. And, oh, I'm sorry, but the behavior doesn't meet the qualifications, the legal definition of what harassment, intimidation and bullying refers to. But yet if you looked that up on the internet, my daughter was sexually assaulted and there was also a death threat. So where, excuse me, so where does that fall under? Last month, the month of October, I filed an HIV report. The month of November, I filed an HIV report. Here it is. Time was taken to put together an elaborate speech and somewhat threatening the parents of this community when we're just trying to stand up for our children. But the time wasn't taken to pick up the phone to aunt, to say, you know what, Mrs. Bright, you should come in. We'd like to sit down with you and have a discussion off the record so it's not on the public eye. So social media is a great platform, like my husband stated, to be praised or to be highlighted for your shortcomings. And this is very unfortunate. There is a problem. You have a principal of an elementary school that is very cold and she's not fit to be a principal. She told me that my daughter would need to be removed from the school if she did not, excuse me.
You cannot bring up personnel.
I'm sorry, you brought up my last name. You brought up my last name.
You're supposed to state your first name.
No, I did and she brought up my last name. And this has been personal. This has now turned into a personal thing.
I understand.
My daughter is traumatized from this event.
I understand.
I reached out to Ms. Shanley. I reached out to the principal.
In the beginning.
Excuse me. I'm sorry.
I have to stop you because you mentioned.
No, you don't have to stop me. What I do know is that my daughter had found, had to go back to school the day after being harassed. The day after being harassed and then what for? So that the child that abused, that made that comment towards her was still in the classroom. We told the principal that for medical reasons, because my daughter needed to feel sa- safe, she needed to wear her Apple Watch.
You just, you just.
You just, you just.
Both on second by Joe Loonam, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we're gonna start our open order. Do you see that? Open my open. Open, a seek a motion open to regular meeting?
You just pulled it.
No, you just started. Okay. I don't need to board statements. Committing the whole. I seek a motion to approve the minutes for November fourteenth work session, November fourteenth close, November fifteenth regular meeting. Tony Albro, seconded by Andrew Lomardi, all in favor?
Aye.
I just have to escape for the fourteenth.
I think they're staying, I wasn't here.
Ready, then?
For any event.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. Okay, Superintendent of Schools report, Daniel Shanley.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so we're gonna make this quick. I have to report out suspensions and HIV. So, at the high school, for the month of November, there was one in, one day, one in-school suspension. At the middle school, there were a total of, one, two, three days of in-school suspension for three different instances. Two.
One.
Eight days of out-of-school suspension for four separate instances. Berkeley Street School, there were two days of out-of-school suspension. And at Gibbs, there were no suspensions for the month of November. Okay. So, you know, I think it's important, I just wanted to say this about HIV. When we, when we report out HIV, and I've said this before, but I'll just remind everyone here in the public. A case of HIV as defined by the state of New Jersey has to meet a three-pronged definition. The first prong is that the victim needs to be a member of a protected class or have a real or perceived distinguishing characteristic, and they had to be the target for that injury. The second prong is that it has to take place in school, on school events, or have a nexus to the school. And the third prong is that it has to substantially interfere with the student's education. If something meets two out of the three prongs, it is dealt with as a code of conduct violation. The discipline, if it met all three prongs, or didn't meet all three prongs, the discipline could be exactly the same. A student can be suspended for three days for fighting, but it not necessarily, the fight didn't occur because the victim was a member of a protected class. But the discipline and/or the services such as counseling, or psychiatric evaluation, or anything like that, the discipline and the follow-up would be the same. Having it equal, the definition of HIV, doesn't mean it's more severe, or, and it doesn't mean that it gets a more stringent or rigorous punishment, follow-through, or services. Okay, so, it's just important to know. So, when something is addressed as a, as code of conduct, that doesn't mean it's less than, as far as the severity of the infraction. It's just not needing the three-pronged definition of HIV. Okay. So, Berkeley Street Elementary School, there were four cases brought to the principal for review. All four were moved forward for a complete investigation. One case was confirmed as bullying, and three were unfounded. Gibbs. One case was brought to the principal for review. It was forwarded to the HIV specialist for a full investigation, and it was confirmed as bullying. David E. Owens. Four cases were brought to the principal for review. All four. I'm sorry. Five were brought to the principal for review. Four were forwarded for a full investigation. One was not determined to need a full investigation, and was dealt with as code of conduct. At David E. Owens, I just wanna make sure, right, that this number is correct. One case was confirmed as bullying, and three were not. At the high school, there were no cases brought to the principal for review in the month of November.
Complete your report.
That completes my report.
Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction Report, Lauren Docsta.
I have no reports.
Is this the miniscule reports? Any of these on board committee reports? Any correspondence?
No.
Okay, a seek a motion open to the public, files on the agenda. Tony Albro, seconded by Joe Lunam, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, seek a motion to close to the public. Stephanie Coughn, her, seconded by Paige Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, board action. I seek a motion for B.A. twenty-three dash twenty-four dot three-one dot three-two dot three-three dot three-four dot three-five dot thirty-six. I need a motion. Nicole Dunn, seconded by Tony Albro, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Educational programs and curriculum committees, Stephanie Coughn.
I make motion, seek approval for C. twenty-three dash twenty-four point fifteen, point twenty-one, point twenty-two, and point twenty-three, need a second.
Angela Lomardi, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I make a motion, having personnel recommendations, having recommendation of superintendent. I make a motion for P. twenty-two dash twenty-three point one-five-nine, point six, P. twenty-three dash twenty-four point six-two, point forty-three, point sixteen, point seventy, point seventy-one, point seventy-two, point seventy-three, point seventy-four, need a second. Paige Ryan, roll call. Mr. Albro?
Yes.
Ms. Calvaro?
Yes.
Mr. DeCosta?
Yes.
Ms. Coughn?
Yes.
Mr. Lomardi?
Yes.
Mr. Luna?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Don?
Yes.
President Bulmer?
Yes.
Finance and Facilities Committee, Paige Ryan.
I make a motion for approval for F. twenty-three dash twenty-four point one-one-eight, point one-one-nine, point one-twenty, point one-twenty-one, point one-twenty-two, point one-twenty-three, point one-twenty-four, point one-twenty-five, point one-twenty-six, point one-twenty-seven, point one-twenty-eight, point one-twenty-nine, point one-thirty, point one-thirty-one, point one-thirty-two, point one-thirty-three, and point one-thirty-four.
Need a second?
And before we do that, I just wanna thank Stephen Milford Education Foundation for the donation.
Yes, thank you. Need a second? Stephanie Coughn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Athletics and co-curricular committee, Nicole Dunn.
I seek a motion for A.C. twenty-three dash twenty-four point nine, point ten, and point eleven.
Need a second? Joe Lunam, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I give you for all Milford graduate.
Policy committee, Anthony Albro.
I seek a motion for the second meeting and adoption of the following policies and regulations. Policy one-six-four-two-two-zero-one, regulation one-six-four-two-zero-one, policy two-two-seven-zero, policy two-four-one-nine, regulation two-four-one-nine, policy three-one-six-one, policy three-two-one-two, regulation three-two-one-two, policy three-three-two-four, policy four-one-six-one, policy four-two-one-two, regulation four-two-one-two, policy four-three-two-four, policy five-one-one-one, regulation five-one-one-one, policy five-one-one-six, regulation five-one-one-six, abolishing policy five-four-six-zero-point-zero-two, abolishing regulation five-four-six-zero-point-zero-two, revising policy eighty-five-hundred, abolishing policy eight-five-four-zero, and abolishing policy eight-five-five-zero.
Need a second? John DeCosta, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any old business? Any new business?
No. There's a request for additional information.
I just wanted to say, Daniel mentioned the athletic play. I was fortunate to be at the Hall of Fame dinner, and I thought Mr. Riccadelli and his office and wonderful job, it was a nice, smooth riding program, and I think we honored students, or students, adults and teens from like the mid-nineties to like maybe two thousand ten, eleven, and it was very impressive and heartwarming to hear, you know, children that are now thirty years old saying how much they miss their high school days and all their fond recollections, and it was really, really good night. Thank you.
I seek a motion open to the public, as outlined in new Milford Board of Education by Law zero-one-six-seven, each day remade by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. John DeCosta, seconded by Nicole Dunn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I seek a motion to close to the public. Tony Albro, seconded by Joe Lunam, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any board member request for additional information?
A. presentation by Dr. Murphy. Can we get that?
Mm-hmm. That was writing.
Mm-hmm. There wasn't a time, but. Yes. Thank you. Absolutely.
I seek a motion to adjourn. Stephanie Coughn, her, seconded by Tony Albro, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next meeting is January third, so the organizational meeting. Thank you. Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Happy holidays. Here, I don't wanna take this from you. There you go. They need a, I look like I did it, right?
Yep. You look great.